Thank you. This is not making me.
Since there's no gavel.
Did you just slap that thing?
Yep. Today is Monday, June, July 11th, 2022. It's 9:00 AM. We are in room 244 and I call the City Commission Workshop Meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Emrich, Vice Mayor Langdon, and Commissioner Luke. There is a quorum present for this meeting. Also present are City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Fosk, Recording Secretary Baker. I have Commander Brownie and Fire Chief Titus in the back, and I'm calling on Chief Titus to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Colorado. We stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
City Clerk, is there any online public comment?
There is not.
Okay, we do have one in-house. Mr. Jeffrey Scott, please, sir. Come on up here to, I guess this microphone here would be good.
Do you want to chair, sir?
No, that's fine. The city of Northport has perfected three undertakings. The breach of the public trust, the continued runaway indulgence in city spending, and that never-ending saga of legal litigation. And they actually excel at what they have perfected. The city's motivations are a warped belief that city officials are superior to we, the people, and unfortunately, the city's bureaucracy is unrelenting and doing just as they please so long as they can get away with it. No matter how things change here in Northport, we seem to keep ending up in the same predicament year after year without any explanation from our elected city commissioners. From my perspective, many city officials have a skewed work ethic, display graft, and do not understand the principles of good governance, nor do they care. The city of Northport has successfully created an environment of suspicion, mistrust, and secrecy that is unresponsive to the residents of Northport, and that will never change unless we demand change for the better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right, moving on to General Business 22-3169. Sixth City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This first item is the discussion of the City of Northport Compensation Study and the Recommended Pay Rates. We are joined here in person by our Human Resources Director, Ms. Christine McDay, as well as we have Stacey Whitchell online virtually to help answer some questions. The results of the study are ones that we began back in the fall in an effort to make sure that we have our rates in alignment so that we can recruit and retain the proper personnel to maintain the services at the highest level, which is what we want for here in the City of Northport. So I will turn it over now to Director McDay, and she will provide you some information that you can have a discussion. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Been away for a while, so it's great to be back and see everyone. Nothing like starting off with a commission meeting to talk about paying. Welcome back. So I hope you guys will be light with it a little bit. But, you know, we, as a, as a city, want to be an employer of choice. We want to retain and attract the best employees. I say that for a lot of reasons. Any employer would say that, but we are growing and, and developing city. Our services, our employee pool, or number of employees, rather, has increased. We certainly saw the need based on the economy, and I can tell you, the last six months, the last year, it has been difficult. And the things I'll say today, I know, you know, I'm just going to do a little background. My job today is just to sort of kind of lay that out for you, but we secured the consultant Evergreen Solutions. Evergreen Solutions, we have Stacy here today who's going to speak later. Took a look, we did a market study this time. In 2017, we did a comprehensive study where we looked at the job descriptions, and we looked at the pay structure and created those things, and we did the different recommendations. And thanks to the commission, they allowed us to, for example, every year, we've been able to move that structure up in relative to a, a percentage to keep our pay structure competitive. We've also changed our policies and how we promote and transfer and demote here at the city when it comes to pay. And then just the big one that we've had, and this is probably the crux of it all, is trying to get people to come work with us because we have to be a competitive employer in a very difficult economy. And then this is why I say, you all know the cost of gas and price of groceries. I had so many articles over the weekend. Ironically, here I am sitting here today to talk to you guys about trying to keep that pay competitive for our current employees and attracting future, but there were articles about the cost of rent here in our area for people to afford housing. There were articles about the groceries, the cost of groceries. So again, I don't want to be, I don't want to preach that to you. You all know those things. As HR, it was time again, due to the economy and really where we were with the last pay study, to take a look and see if we're still competitive, and that's what it's all about. We've tried different things in our recruiting efforts, certainly, and we talked about that this morning in my office. We've had some onsite pay, I'm sorry, onsite job fairs. We've eliminated some of the steps to be a little more efficient in how we attract. If you get someone interested, you got to get them on board sooner. They're going to go somewhere else, and we're competing. And I know a lot of folks in our area, and I think Stacy's going to talk about that, have been getting raises throughout the year for different reasons, but it's, it's all about trying to stay competitive. And so we did, we chose to go with Evergreen again because they did the study last time. This was not, again, a comprehensive. It was to look at how our pay structure has moved along. And I'm pleased to say it's, it's moved along, and that's good. We could be in a very different situation today at what we would be recommending. But the tight labor market is certainly something that we're plagued with, and retaining people, we're trying to watch our turnover, and we, it's so easy. There was one position in particular that we, well, Chuck is here, I think I saw earlier, our solid waste operators. We couldn't attract and couldn't get solid waste operators. We were competing with a local company who was giving thousands of dollar sign-on bonuses and paying more. So there are things we've had to do. So we had our, our managers were out on the field. The supervisors were doing the work, and just so many reasons. We were able to try to address that and make some changes. So as we've gone along, we've done our best to maintain the current pay structure. Again, this, this was more of a modified market study to see how that structure has fared the last five years. So with that, I was going to go ahead and introduce Stacy Whitchell. She's here on the screen, and she can talk to you about the study itself.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me there today. I see, I see a couple of folks on the screen, so I don't have a presentation. I just kind of wanted to walk you through kind of what we did, what we found, and also speak to some of what was just mentioned there about some of your market peers around you, what's been done there, even outside of the data, of us collecting the data here for your project. So your, your project, we did go back through. We collected market data from your peer organizations. We collected data from several right there around you, Charlotte County, Lee County, Manatee, Sarasota, San Diego, Bradenton, along the, your peers have been identified as either direct market peers. They're right within close proximity. You're competing with these folks for quality staff, you know, or it's people that are, or, sorry, cities that are of similar size to you guys. So I think you've got that there in front of you. What we collected there in total was about 550 data points for a bunch of different classifications that we use as your benchmarks. And in doing that, we found that overall, if I'm looking at the survey midpoint, you're about 4% behind the market. At the, at your survey, at the minimums of your pay salaries, as they currently are, you're about two, lower 2% below the market. Now, 2% below the market is, is a pretty good competitive place to be, but I would say, even since this data was collected, a lot of your peers around you have since made some additional adjustments. If I was going to run these numbers today, I would anticipate that to be closer to, I'd say anywhere from 5% to 7% behind market at the minimums. Lee County in particular just did a 10% adjustment for everybody under $52,000, and then a graduated adjustment after that. We have a few other clients actually working with in your general area. I know what they're looking to do. And my, my estimate's probably about 5% to 7% below. There's a lot of changes right now. It's a very dynamic market right now where the private sector has made a lot of adjustments in the last couple of years. Public sector is now catching up. And, you know, no surprise to me, the conversations that I've had with your team there, some of the challenges of some of those classifications you're having a hard time either retaining or recruiting are the same ones other peoples are also having a hard time recruiting those folks. So keeping all of that in mind and wanting to maintain your market position, we did recommend a revised plan. It's going to extend your range spreads a little bit. We're going to bring them a little bit wider, give you a little bit more room within those range spread, within those pay grades for your staff members. And brought them up, drew them up with that move to 15 that everybody is doing also around you. And by state of Florida, you know, we have to be there by 2026. Most areas and most municipalities are getting there a lot sooner, now or the next six months. So we're adjusting your plan accordingly to kind of bring you up to that point. Overall, your plan is, we're looking at about a 5% adjustment to your current structure. We didn't reorganize too much other than that. A few classifications were adjusted to kind of fit those market points where they needed to be. But in all in all, it would be a 5% adjustment, 427 people receiving those adjustments, an average salary adjustment of about 5.5%. Any questions on, on that right now, or anything else you would like me to touch on this morning?
Any commissioners' questions?
I have a boatload of questions on this salary study, but I'll be happy to hear from the others.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate this document that you guys gave us this morning, but looking at the total of impact this will have on this year's budget, it says it's $1.1 million for this fiscal year using a 2.5%. But when you go to Exhibit 4E, it shows the total of $1.2 million, and that was for a full 5% increase. And I'm wondering, where did these numbers come from in relation to the study?
I defer to finance, but I will tell you that these numbers are based on a place and time when they got the data. We have to work now in, in, work now closer and give all the information to finance. One of the things I didn't mention, yeah, we were looking at to do this over a two-year period instead of just doing it one year, the hit on the, on the, on the budget. But we got this so late, we're still working with finance to kind of go through. When I say late, we got this. Budget happens. You guys all have deadlines. We're all trying, trying to still work through all the files and the information they sent us, but these guys are the experts. Oh, I just touched your.
That's all right.
I used my hands. You guys, these guys are the experts, and that's probably where the difference is, because you want to speak to that?
Sure, sure. So the, the biggest difference is the consultant's report only looked at salary and salary for current employees. So I think the initial plan was to do an adjustment in this fiscal year, if that was correct, when this was released in May. So the analysis was, everybody on payroll as of, let's say, July 1, here's who we had in our, our sample, and then we would adjust them the 5%. That analysis ignores the impact to benefits. So you have FICA, and then you have FRS, right? And then the, the analysis also did not include vacant positions, so if additional employees we filled were brought on board. And then the second part of this recommendation that you see in front of you is HR's recommendation that they've been doing their analysis on since the consultant did their work. It actually broadens the scope of who's then eligible because we have an additional 46 positions proposed for next year. So when you do a two-year implementation plan, you're, you're casting a wider net of folks that you're going to have to bring on board at also the new pay rates, which is not included in the budget proposal that's before you. So this is a full look at what does it mean year over year? And when you do it two years, we have another, other, a number of other adjustments that come into play during fiscal year 2023, so that when you do the second 2.5, next October, you have to compound that. That study was only one year, 5%. So it's a whole different scenario that HR is bringing you than the initial report as proposed due to timing as well and the implementation.
So does this sheet that was passed out, does that 1.1 million for this fiscal year, does that include FRS, and does that include FICA?
So I could read you everything that's included in that assumption, but yes.
No, I, I just, FICA and FRS are the biggest components to this. I mean, this is salary?
So that's salary, FICA, and FRS.
Those are the three biggest components to this.
The other piece then is that because we're doing it October 1, and it's also covering the fact that it's everyone moving forward in the new pay ranges. So you have those 46 additional positions that'll be coming in next year that we had to account for the increase. So when we hire them, the new minimums have gone up. So you have that component as well. When you increase your pay table, everyone going forward is going to be coming in at a higher rate, and that also accounts for a number of vacancies that were not included in the analysis. That was a point-in-time data pool, so we wanted to make sure that we captured the impact to all employees. But a big chunk of it would be the, the benefits, but I wanted, I wanted to make sure you had all the pieces.
I appreciate that. So did this pay, pay study include any look at benefits? When you're comparing these 12 entities, all private sec, I'm sorry, all public sector, did you look at what does this Lee County do for their health insurance? What does Charlotte County do for their paid time off? What does Sarasota County do for their, you know, bereavement policies? Did you look at benefits?
Can we get Stacy back to?
Yeah, I, I just unmuted. Yeah, I'm here. So this study did not look at benefits. The contract was just to look at the current pay structure and compare it to your organization and look at the shift in market. So that's, that's what we looked at here, benefits not included.
That's really unfortunate because it doesn't give us a whole picture. We, we might be increasing salaries, and we're talking about increasing health insurance and absorbing the cost, the premium increase for health insurance, but maybe other municipalities or stuff are doing something completely different. So it's unfortunate. We don't get the whole picture to be able to make this decision.
Well, it, it was a compensation itself. It was a wage study only. You're right. It only looked at that.
And, and I feel like I'm repeating myself from 2006, 17, when I said the exact same thing, you know, it's, it's a total compensation package. Paid time off, health insurance, vacation time, everything is looked at when you're an employee, comparing apples and apples, deciding, do I go with City of Northport, or do I go with, you know, Sarasota County or whoever? So I just was, had to ask that question. The consultant said that 427 people will receive an adjustment. We have over 700 employees. What happens to them?
We have negotiated contracts with different unions that we would have to take into consideration. One of the things I mentioned, I started to mention, we have, we received this late on the 29th, 30th, and we still have to go through and scrub, we were talking about scrubbing, go through and make, look at, we're going to look at every single person to see, but I can tell you, those are a couple of groups that stand out because I can't, I'd have to go back to the table and adjust them. Some of them have articles that, there may be the same adjustment made, but yeah, those are some of the things.
So were they included with this study? Can you speak to that?
We, we did look at fire and police. However, as Christine was saying, their contracts negotiated for three years, so they would not be included in the study, but we did look to see where they fell in the range, how competitive we were. So.
And when you negotiate a contract and you're looking at their pay, we do market studies with all our regional areas. So in a sense, it was, we did it when we negotiated. We compare what we're paying. In fact, I mean, our Chief Titus is here. Deputy Chief Morales and Chief Garrison, same thing with their police. They shared information with us. We researched it when we were negotiating those contracts.
Okay. But those contracts were approved 18 months ago-ish?
About 12 months.
Okay, so about 12 months ago. I'm sorry, but inflation has soared exponentially in 12 months.
Agreed.
So in my opinion, those numbers are outdated. I understand that it's a union contract, and we've been known in the past to open up those union contracts, to have them readjusted to be fair and equitable. I mean, if we can't get solid waste truck drivers, what the heck makes anybody think we're going to get police officers or firefighters if the, the market salaries are considerably outdated even after a year? Who would think a year would be outdated? But in these times, it is.
You know, as I said, we have to go back and look at all the positions a little bit further and see if that's something we would propose. We would go through our city manager to see if that's something we want to do.
I am way past my 10 minutes, so I'll yield and come back if that's okay, ma'am.
Does anybody else have any questions? Vice Mayor, Commissioner White?
No, sir.
Is this wide open for this topic?
Yeah.
All right. What I'm curious of is, I noticed that some of the salaries were above, some are below, and you're talking about an increase across the board. How is that justified? Some are already over, and they're getting a 5% increase, but those who are under are only receiving a 5% increase too. Why are we not adjusting for the lower ones more of a magnitude than, than the ones that are already over? I mean, why are we increasing the ones that are over to start with?
Well, I, I can tell you that we always want to make sure we are looking at internal equity and compression, and I get your point. And I don't know if Stacy has a better answer for that, but we are looking at doing it across the board.
Across the board, but as well, Evergreen identified positions that were well below market, more than, I think it was 12% off, top of my head. And we will look at those positions to do an additional adjustment if they are that far behind the market. But it's just, it was very few positions that were identified by Evergreen.
Yeah, I think you guys did a really good job kind of representing that already. Just to add on, when positions come in that are, when we're looking at the market studies and we're comparing these classifications, if we see ones that are significantly below a market point, then not only are we looking at what do we need to do with the plan in its entirety, and that would be that 5% adjustment. You know, keep in mind, that's an adjustment to the pay grade minimum. That's not the adjustment everybody would receive. And even when you're looking at that 5.5% average, that is a true average. Not everybody's getting that, that adjustment. If a, if a classification in particular is, comes in that it's significantly lower, and that 5% just really doesn't account for what it would need to, then the recommendation is made to adjust it also vertically a pay grade to make up for that. So you wouldn't want to take one pay grade or classification and, and handle it at a single level. You must still be able to manage your pay grades as of those groups. So for instance, I think there was, let me go back and look at my list, too. I think maybe it was our creation supervisor, I think he was one of them that came in lower than market. And so, you know, that's when you may want to consider moving vertically as well. And those are all things that can be done within your pay grade. Your pay plan gives flexibility to do that.
All right. So am I understanding a few sentences into this statement that you are making, that the 5% increase is only to the minimum? It is not to the individual salary? So employee X is not looking forward to a 5% increase. It is just that category? The minimum receives the 5%?
So, yeah, we're looking at 5% adjustment to your pay grades, and then looking to see how does that now impact your, your, your folks' sitting their salaries where they are in relation to their pay rates? where they are in relation to their pay rates?
All right. So not everybody is going to receive a 5% increase then?
So I believe we're proposing 2.5% this October 1st and 2.5% next October 1st. So the pay range would adjust by 5% now to make us more competitive in hiring. But then individuals would have a 2.5% increase.
Everyone.
Everyone. And then there would be some that are far out of range, more, more than 10% that we would look at making an additional adjustment by moving their pay grade up a level.
Okay. My only other concern is that we were out of line. And congratulations to the team, only 4.1. And I know the recommendation then is to round it way up to the five instead of leaving it at the four. Personally, I don't mind doing the 2.5 this year. I think biting off the larger piece of the apple is better. But then next year, I would look at only a 1.5 and allow it to equate to a 4%. Because that is actually what the study showed. But I don't mind the, the 2.5 for this year. If, if you're going to do it in a year, we have the funds this year. I think we can take that larger bite at this point in time. But I would really caution for next year. Thank you.
Commissioner Miguel?
Yeah, so we have about, depending on what percentages you use in the study, it shows there's like 40 to 52% of the employees are above market. And they're getting a 5% increase. Some of them are way above market. And help me understand why?
You have to remember, it's our seasoned employees. This year, we have actually lost more, you know, tenured employees than in past years to competitors. You know, we've lost some people with 20, 25 years of service that, you know, are going to our competitors because they're paying more. We haven't seen that in the past. Most of the time, people do stay. But, you know, FRS is, you know, transferable. So we don't have a pension that they have to stay with the City of Northport. They can now float. So, you know, our, it's not just recruiting in, which has been very, very difficult. But it's the retention of our current employees. And while they may be above market by the study, that does not mean that they will not get a more competitive offer to be stolen away by one of our competitors. And we are seeing that. So we do have to look at compression. We also have to look at competition. We need to retain our assets that have that historical knowledge.
So in the study, it said there was like, I'm trying to find the exact page, sorry. I want to, there was a note that there are eight classifications filled by 110 employees who are not assigned a pay range and therefore not included in this analysis. What does that mean?
That was police and fire, only fire, sorry, only fire. Well, they have their own.
What's it called?
Professional development plan.
All right. Some of the data that was given when the agenda posted said this. And then it got amended and the data, some of the charts were changed. And I'm curious, why the change?
In the file report itself?
Yeah.
Was that the pay structure? Yeah, can you speak to that? Von Scotty?
So as Christine mentioned, when we got the pay plan, we have not had a full chance to totally vet it. I mean, we are reading it at the same time everybody else is for the most part. And we discovered late last week that there were some errors in the data that they had in the report. So we asked them to correct it, which is why then the reports came back differently. Some of the pay grades were incorrect. There was some market data that had not been cleared out that showed various percentages that were inaccurate.
Now, one of the things was below minimum showed like 11 employees were hired at below minimum. That's what the old report said. So we, we hired people below the minimum standard pay grades?
We typically do not do that, no. And I, I would have to see where she got that information because we've never hired people below the minimum. The only people hired outside of our pay structure would be our camp counselors. And they are brought in at a different rate than our pay plan. They have a set rate that they're given.
So all of the employees that are below minimum now, I think there's, it says here 46 of them? Or I should say at minimum?
At minimum.
At minimum, sorry. Forty-eight of them. What happens to those 48 job classifications? Or are they employees?
As those pay grades are adjusted for the first year by the 5%, they would receive the full 5% to go to the new minimum. So that they would not remain below the minimum. Because we're going to hire people in at the new minimum. We wouldn't want to leave them below that. So they would move the full 5% to the new minimum of the pay grade, should we shift it by whatever percentage.
Some of the job classifications, I saw comparing 22 slash 23 hiring, those job classifications, there's a few of them that actually went down in classification, which means they went down in salary. What are we doing with those employees? Are they getting their salaries?
They will not be, they will not receive a reduction in pay. We would not do that.
But they'll receive the 5% increase?
We have to take a look at where they are, yeah. If the new pay grade goes up and they're below the pay grade, yes, they would receive whatever they would need to go to the new pay grade.
So in 2017, and I think Commissioner Luke will remember this, we did topped out employees, those ones that are topped out, not maxed out, because there was a difference between topped out and maxed out. Maxed out employees were the ones that were at the very tippy top of their range. And they got a 2% pay increase, not a full 5% or whatever it was back in 2017. They got a 2% increase until they reached that maxed out rate. Topped out employees were those that are way over the maxed out range. And they got a 3% at their anniversary based on their pay.
Their evaluation.
Their evaluation, thank you. Is that something that we are, we can consider this year? And what would that look like in, as far as costs?
Those are, I mean, we will be looking at that to see how, what kind of, I don't even think we have that many because the last, it's moved up one and a half, one and a half, two. I don't think we have, but maybe two that are maxed out. We have very few.
Right. There, for those that are at the top of their pay range, the top of the pay range is going to shift as well. So it doesn't move just the bottom. It shifts the whole pay range by whatever percentage we choose, if it's the five. And they would be eligible to receive a 2.5% increase because they would be below the top of that pay range, yes.
So this is, in, in my opinion, and help me understand it, this pay study is basically putting us back even, even keeled?
Gets us back to market and competitive. That's really what it's all about.
So there, there, it's kind of like a fresh start. And we'll be even. We're not going to be below, we're not going to be behind, we're going to be even.
Yeah, we're not saying that we are going to lead the market in the area or anything. That's not our intention at all.
Okay. So help me understand, why would we give a CPI on top of the increase in salary? If we're, if we're putting everything and resetting the entire salary structure and resetting it, why would we give a 1.5 CPI when we're starting anew?
I think that's the discussion we have to have. I don't know if you want to address that.
Yeah, the CPI is more of an external force that in order to keep up with, that we won't even be keeping up with prices that are the CPI index because the raises and the amounts of percentage increases will not equal to the, what the CPI is. So the CPI amount is in addition to the salary adjustment as well as their performance adjustment. Because it is trying to adjust for what inflation is happening in the economy. I don't, I won't, I don't think I would combine that into and say that now that you're starting off fresh, you are sort of, you know, equaling the, the playing field. You're equaling the playing field for the salaries itself. That's what the adjustment is for, to get the salary structure back into alignment, not the salary with all the things that are actually on top of it. The comparison that we made this study for, as she mentioned, was for, to see how we compare to others who are doing the same roles, not exactly what they are giving in order to keep up with the cost of everything.
But I thought Steph said that the salary study was starting new. That it took all of the inflationary costs and everything into consideration when we started. That was the whole purpose of having to do the salary study.
No, the purpose of the salary study was to see how we could recruit and retain based on what others were offering that were competitive in order to recruit and retain. That was the purpose of making sure that they couldn't come here and we offer one thing and they go somewhere else and get offered another thing.
And as Stacy mentioned, I mean, they started this study in March. Some of this data is already old. I mean, we're, there are people, I mean, we, we, we are part of a lot of email groups and chats and things. And people are giving raises in the month of August. They're giving raises in the month of May. I mean, they're doing it to, it's for market reasons. They're trying to make adjustments. So the 4.1 or 4%, however we want to look at it, is already a little bit below. Stacy, you mentioned that, I think, as well.
Yeah, I did. And so if you look at what yours have done around you within the last month, they've already made other adjustments that, that are not reflected in that market data. So that's why I said if I ran those numbers again today, I'd anticipate that you would be at least 6% behind. Not, not that two at the minimum and four at the mid that you're seeing in front of you.
Is the minimum wage along the same lines as COLA? Is the $1 minimum wage or 1% minimum wage, is that taken into consideration with this pay study also?
I believe she mentioned that, that that was also a consideration.
Okay, so we don't need to do that 1%?
Yeah, I think because it's going to continue to move us along. Isn't that right? We will be above the, we're above the, right now.
No, we're not.
Not even the minimum.
No, we're not.
We will be though, with this recommendation.
Not with this recommendation. Even with this 5%, we're still below the $15 minimum wage.
Today.
Today.
I'm talking about going forward.
Going forward, we would get there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're saying different. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
We're getting closer, but I think the due date is 2026?
2026. And the other thing I would like to add to that is not only do we need to get to at least 15, most people are, we're hearing 16, 18, starting wages around us are not 15 even. I mean, we're paying far less than our competitors, whether public or private sector. And, you know, we need to try to be able to attract those people. We have good jobs to offer, but not the wage that people need to live.
But if we were to raise our salaries, just conversation. If we were to raise our salaries to the $15 today, okay? I think there was an email that said there's, there's a few employees that are under 15. If we raise that to that 15, what happens to the, the guys and gals that are making 15, 50 or 16 dollars that have experience, that have been here for a while? What happens to that compression?
That's why we're trying to raise it incrementally across the board so we don't end up with those compression issues.
Correct. But this pay study removes the compression issue for the minimum wage thing?
No. It, it brings us to approximately 1493 an hour.
1493 with the study today?
If we implemented the 5%, it would take us to 1493. I did that math this morning, so I'd add it in my head.
But we're not on a, we're not in violation of statute at this point because it's down the road. That's what Commissioner Luke was saying.
Yeah, but we should be there. So we're not looking to jump those people to 15. We're looking to continue to incrementally move them along as our pay plan progresses through with cost of living adjustments with, with those things to make sure that we're in a competitive wage by the time we get to September of 2026, when that law does go into effect.
Can I add?
Go ahead.
There was an email that came out to us this morning and.
The what?
I'm foggy headed or something. There are currently five positions that are under $15 an hour, which, no problem. I mean, minimum wage is not there yet. So no problem with that. But then there are 67 employees that are paid under $15 an hour.
Our lifeguards are a large pool of that.
Yeah, but if there's only five positions that are under 15.
Five classifications. It is not positions.
Okay, it says positions, so it's classification. That answered it.
Lifeguards, recreation attendants, solid waste assistance.
I didn't realize position was a new classification.
Yeah, it's classification, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. You know, if, if the goal here is to, to keep the employees that we have, I don't even know if 2.5% is going to do anything. It, it, it truly isn't.
You're correct.
So why don't we look at it as incremental steps in these next coming year for this fiscal year? And do the 2.5% as of October 1st? And then the following quarter, do the 1.5% COLA? And I'm just throwing ideas out because if you do the salary increase and then you do another step of increasing COLA and then you do another step of increasing salaries and do that incrementally instead of one fell swoop of basically 9% across the board with the evaluations taken into consideration? If you do it in one fell swoop, we can possibly do it the entire year so that when we start fiscal year 23, 24, we are at possibly even above market. To do it all at one time, starting October 1st kills the budget and then we still have to address it further on down the road. But if we do it incremental steps, we might get where we need to be in one year as opposed to two.
Those are definitely possibilities. You know, keep in mind that employee reviews don't all happen on 10/1. They're spread out throughout the year.
I know, the employee reviews are all spread out throughout the year. I understand that. But even the 5%, when you take the 1.5% COLA, you take the 1% of the $15 minimum wage and then you take the 2.5% salary adjustment. If you, because that all probably is going to take effect 10/1. If you did it incrementally throughout the year, each quarter, the employees know, hey, in three months, I'm going to get a COLA adjustment. In three more months, I'm going to get a 2.5% salary increase. In another three months, I'm going to get the 1% $15 minimum wage. Again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it might be a way to accomplish what this pay study is ultimately trying to accomplish. And that is to keep and retain the employees that we have and get people to come here to work. And I'm just throwing it out there, I mean.
May I make a comment?
In, in my experience, employees want it now. So I don't think the carrot of a small adjustment through the year will accomplish. It's good creative thinking, but I think it's much more effective for people to have it now. That's it.
I was, I was going to say pretty much the same thing. I'm somebody who likes to rip the Band-Aid off and I was all about making it happen this year. Of a 4% instead of a 2.5 and a 2.5. Next year, I was thinking of a 4. And they're, they're different silos. I mean, salary is different than benefit. It's different than COLA. It's different than the program. We've got to get the minimum wage put up. So you can't look at it, in my opinion, my experience, all, it was one. And, and set them in, in different timing. It needs to come wholly, they're individual. It needs to come wholly, they're individuals, but it needs to come as a whole for it to actually accomplish what you're wanting it to accomplish. Thank you.
And I understand.
Commissioner White, go ahead. She just raised her hand.
I thought you were pointing at me, I apologize.
That's good.
No, so I just wanted to be clear that right now we are 4% behind the market. The study showed, right. And then, so even if we gave the whole 5%, we would just be 1% above that.
Well, probably not.
Possibly.
Possibly.
She's saying that we are already behind.
That's right. And that's just one I concern about, as, as Vice Mayor was saying, these little increments is not going to be something that's going to retain people, because they're going to be behind the eight ball again. So, yeah, you know, I don't see the problem in going for the full 5%. We're behind, we have been behind for a while. And HR has said about, that recruitment and retention is, is the big deal. And, and again, if you just become, if you're just a training ground, which I think is what has been happening, that they come here and they get that experience, and then they can go and, and they're lured away with, with
More pay?
Yeah, yeah. And as a former teacher, I know that very well. I was working for a school district that these young, vibrant teachers would come in, do their three years, and go to a district that paid a lot more money. So we lost all that talent, and, um, and that, I know that's what's happening here. So I just wanted to be clear about that, those percentages. Because, yeah, facing it at a 2.5%, that means we would still be behind 1.5%, and then things are going to change. The cost is still going to go up of things, and we're going to be right back in that same position that we are now. So, um, and I think that, and then there was a question about the ones that are already above. That would be, that would be figured in? I don't, don't think I understood the answer to that. They would get a percentage increase as well, or not necessarily?
Those are the things we're looking at. I think we have to take another look at that.
Yeah, we still have to look at those. We only have two employees that would fall into that category, and we would need to look at those individually.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, you had your hand up first, so.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. One is, I, I concur. I would be open to swallowing the whole thing this year if we can do it in the budget. So I'd be looking at your recommendation. If we need to split it up, then we need to split it up. But I certainly would be open to, um, doing the whole thing this year. And we're making a lot of increases in a lot of things this year, both in terms of our expenses as well as in terms of our revenue. And I know that can be shocking to people who are watching. It's been my impression that over the past many years that I've been watching, we collectively have nickelled and dimed our city employees. We've been understaffed, we've underpaid, and I'm of the firm belief, you get what you pay for. And in the past, we've had lots of issues with staff and all kinds of things. And to attract the level of person that we're starting to attract at our senior positions, we want to be able to attract people at our lower positions as well, so that they can move up. We're the ninth fastest growing, sometimes it's the eighth, sometimes it's the ninth fastest growing in the United States. And wow, that hurts. I mean, it hurts to grow that fast. And so I think we need to acknowledge that. We need to take a big gulp and move forward as best we can. So those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Luke?
Thank you. I appreciate what you stated. I'm somebody, to me, if the goal you're wanting to accomplish is to get you to that endpoint, you do it. And we do have the revenue at this point, so I appreciate you saying that. In '17, when we did the complete study, we decided there was, you could come in just under, you could come in just right, or you could be the cream of the crop and be over. And when we saw the figures and stuff, we said we wanted to come in so that we were competitive. And that, that 4% or that 4.1 keeps us within that competitive edge. The 5% according to what is being told to us, it sets us a little over. I know people are saying, oh, but, you know, things are going up and it's more than 5%. And, but the data that we're given is the data that we're given. We're not given what somebody's doing currently. So I have to look at the data that's presented to me. Our, it says that we are 2.2% below in the minimum, if I'm reading this correctly, 4.1 below in the midpoint, and then 5.3 below in the maximum. So evidently, they're taking the difference from the midpoint and then going to adjust the ends to make that? Is that?
It's typically how it's done, is you would adjust the pay plan across whatever percentage we designate, yes.
Okay. And I have no issue with taking that 4% and making it happen this year. I really don't. The 5%, 5% spread that you're looking at for the, the minimum in that, got no problem with you adjusting that. But the, the salary increase, I, I would just like to do the 4% this year with the other silos that I was talking about. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner McHale?
Does this 1.2 million estimate of what we need to do include reclassifying a employee that was at, let's say, a 906 that moved up to a 908? Does that include those increases in classifications across the board? Yes?
Yes, those were in there, but again, the 1.2, we would still have to add the FICA and the FRS. So it, it would be the 1 point, for the 1.2 you're talking about in the study or in the spreadsheet?
In the sheet that you passed out here.
Mm-hmm, for the 2.5%.
It says, okay, it's 1.173. Sorry, I rounded it up to 1.2.
Sorry, when you said 1.2, I could think of the report number that's up, so, yeah.
So this?
That does include it, yes.
This includes it?
And that's a 2.5% increase. Or if they are not at the minimum, it moves into the minimum, whichever is greater.
Okay, so does this number on the sheet include the employees that go from one classification, possibly up two, possibly up three, possibly up one? Because there were a lot of classifications that moved around.
Yes, those were built in already.
And then there were some that went down?
Correct. So they would just, in this scenario, they get the 2.5 then?
Okay. So that is including that number and the FRS and?
Yes.
Everything else, okay. I would really like to see what those, let me back up. During budget workshops, we were told that the pay study, the cost of the pay study, this 1.2, we'll just call it 1.2, is not factored into the 2023 City Manager Recommended Budget. How is this going to be paid for? 1.2 is a lot of money to find in a budget. That looks like it's pretty well spent.
Sure, I, that's not my, you know, certainly, we'll have to discuss that with the city manager and come up with ways to fund that.
I thought that's what we were doing today.
No, today we're getting, giving you information on the study itself, because we just received it, because you wanted to discuss it as soon as we received it. When we get to the next budget meeting on July 19th, we'll propose some scenarios of what the actual spending would look like, what, what does that do to your fund balance and choices that you'll have to make in order to figure out how you want to move forward. Today is informational sharing and giving you as much information as we have as soon as we have it.
Well, I would really like to see the stair step that I kind of alluded to previously, because if you're coming up with 1.2 starting October 1st, as opposed to spreading out 1.2 across four quarters, there's a huge difference. And, and I would be kind of curious to see what that looks like. I, I agree, employees want it now. But a reasonable employee goes, okay, I'm not going to get the whole bite of the apple at this point, but guess what, I get another bite in a few months, and I get another one in a few more months. And I, I would think that that would be acceptable to them. This is not private sector. These are, employees are being paid for by taxpayers, and our taxpayers are hurting, and hurting really, really bad. And we need to be cognizant of that. And I understand, we also have to be cognizant of what our employees need to be able to stay here and be able to afford to live here. So it, it's a huge balancing act, but to take the one and eat the whole apple at one time just may not be doable. And, and I'd really like to see some other scenarios than just doing it in one fell swoop. We might be able to accomplish everything by spreading it out. So that, I, I'm just asking if that could be done.
Oh, I'm sure it can be done. The only thing, the concern that I have with that is how the employees are, are paid with their evaluations, depending on what's
It's already factored in the budget.
I understand that, but whatever comes first in your step plan, let's say their evaluation is in January, but they don't get another piece until the end, the percentages might be a loss to that employee, because they didn't get everything to begin with going forward in October. Do you understand what I'm saying? If they're going to get 3%, but they, on their evaluation, but they haven't gotten this and this yet, it's a lower percentage for that employee. It may not be many out there, but it is different if you spread it out. That's the only thing that I, that I'm, I'm worried about, because some employees may get more than other employees, and now you're creating dissension.
Depending on their date.
Yeah, depending on their evaluation date. So that's just concerning to me, um, breaking it down that way. But I understand what you're saying, and I, I would be cautious on that, that's all.
Most, most private sector employees aren't getting those kind of raises. Most private sector employees don't have the contributions to FRS, or, I'm sorry, not FRS, but a retirement thing. And this goes back to what I was saying, we, we have to look at everything in its totality. And I, I just, it's a balancing act, and we, we got to, we got to find that sweet spot.
Right, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just say, um, we have experts in the room at figuring this stuff out. I recommend we let staff figure it out, um, and then come back to us with the best way. Can we do it all in one year? You know, what does that mean in terms of what doesn't happen or happens at a, you know, a smaller level? So let's let the experts figure it out and come back to us with their plan.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yep.
Commissioner Luke, I seen you first, then you.
The difference between what the, what the projects that are in this budget this year compared to what came back is the final. 3.5 million was plugged into the fund balance, the stabilization. So you have an extra 3.5 million. That is why I say you've got the funds this year, rip the Band-Aid off. I don't mind just doing the 4% to get it where it matches the data, and you're done with it.
Well, they can come back with the numbers discussing what the 4% was going to be on the impact to the budget, what 5% would be throughout the budget hearings, and then we can discuss those numbers then and see what's more feasible.
I have no problem looking at what the
I would like to look at different possibilities, absolutely. So, I mean, instead of just one and say, okay, yea, yere, nay, let's see what the 4% does, see what the 5% does.
And, and I have no problem with doing that. I know what things are at right now. If we're looking at a recession, we definitely do need the funds in the fund balance. And you're going to see the salaries probably come to a screeching halt, private and, and public. That was one of the reasons I was looking at the lesser, trying to see what the future. I mean, we can't look at the, at the glass or the crystal ball thing. But that is why I was looking at it conservatively, uh, instead of over, because we might be looking at tightening belts.
Yeah, we, we might be. I think jobs figures just came out last week, and it was way higher than they were anticipated. So some folks who've been saying, oh, recession, recession, are kind of moving off that a little bit. So we don't know what's going to happen.
I don't think they know what's going to happen, no one does.
No, no, no one does. And I mean, this is a really weird time. I mean, it really, truly is. The economy is wacky, but man, we're out there spending money. And that's why there's inflation. I mean, it's, it's economics. But when you've got that 5.5 million, to me, you put it to use. Yes, you are, you have some reserves, but why stretch it when you got it? Is the way, way I look at it. What I'll say about private versus public, I'm around a lot of the, the private. They're having really hard times hiring people. And the level of professional, and we have a lot of professional positions in this city. It's not just, you know,
Blue collar?
Yeah, it's not strictly blue collar. You have a lot of professional positions here. They're having hard times in, in the private sector. I mean, people making over three, 1/3 of a million, you know, over 300,000, they still can't fill those positions. So we have to look at the caliber of positions that we have here too, when we compare it to the general worker, the blue collar worker in the community. There's a difference. You can't expect a professional to work at a blue collar pay scale.
Commissioner White?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the 1.2 million that was thrown out of that figure, that would be if we, the, the difference in going to the 5% increase. Is that what that is or no? What, what was that?
That was if they were doing 5% over two years, that was year one of the two years.
Okay.
It's 2.5.
For the full, okay.
Over the two years, you're looking at 2.1, 4 or 5%.
Yeah, adding the two together. But if you do it, yeah, if, if we do it in one swoop, it will be less, because you're not now compounding it on other increases. So that, that is something that we can forward back, I suppose.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Are you looking to do this 2.5% increase at October 1?
That's what this analysis includes, yes.
I just want to make sure, October 1, thank you.
So is that going to be an option of what you were saying, to come back? What would 2.5 look like and what would the whole 5% look like? Is that what you're going to come back with? And then?
Yep.
The finance department will work their, their magic? Yes, which, again, I'm, I'm going the vice mayor, they are more than competent and capable of doing that. So, and that would come back?
Yes, throughout the budget meetings.
Okay, okay. Yep, thank you.
Good, good work.
All right, uh, we're going to move on to, uh, public comment. Is there any online public comment?
There is not.
All right. I have one in-house, Mr. Jeffrey Scott, please, sir.
Thank you. This is my rebuttal regarding this agenda item. The city of Northport is always dependent upon increases to the city's budget that support their talking points, and a narrative that a tax and spend local government bureaucracy is a good thing. This fallacy is nothing more than a concerted propaganda effort orchestrated by the city's administration. In other words, we can tax and spend our way to prosperity at the local level without any fallout moving forward. This is simply not true. To date, the city of Northport has no tools whatsoever to reduce city spending. They push, they simply ramble on like a bunch of adolescents to get what they want at budget workshop without any pushback. workshop without any pushback from our city commission. When there is little or no oversight by commission, the City of Northport will continue their abuse of power to the detriment of the Northport taxpayer. The real model, the real solution to consider is to move forward and right-size city government into a more efficient business model that is held accountable. In the meantime, the City of Northport continues to drift further and further away from the mission of their strategic plan. They cannot continue to fabricate the truth and remain indifferent or unclear as to what the city's vision should look like moving forward. The day of reckoning is upon us, and what is the city administration going to do when their strategic plan is only as good as the paper it is printed on? This is not the kind of predicament we, as a city, should be envisioning during these turbulent times. It's that apparent to me, how about you? And to my knowledge, city employees seek other employment on their own volition. I'll leave it up to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
I just was curious, are they going to be including fire and police when they come back with July workshops? I know that they're under union contract, I just was curious if that was going to be part of the discussion for fire and police.
I do not believe fire and police contracts are, rates are up for discussion at this point. I believe that, I heard you mention that in the past, you have directed those sort of negotiations to be reopened based on market conditions, and if that is the will of the board, then that's what we can do. But I do not believe it is included in what we've done so far.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't even begin to suggest to open up those union contracts until after we see where they are in the market, based on this pay study.
Well, and going through this even further, when it breaks down, they may want to come and say, yeah, we'd like to open up our contract and get on board with the pay study as well. So when we all have that information, you might, you might see-
So the fire and police will not be subjected to an increase in COLA of the one and a half percent, or the 1%?
It's whatever's in their contract.
Exactly. I just want to make sure if-
You have to follow contract. I believe it was three or three and a half COLA. It wasn't the one and a half, I believe it was higher.
I don't have the contract in front of me, but it was a concern that I had. You don't? Thank you.
I'm very confident that our union reps, they say a discrepancy, we will hear them though. So, I'm not worried.
And what this study was showing, it appeared as though they were still in good shape, you know, in those departments. The contract, that's why you have contracts. I mean, we're talking about-
But if we're, and I hear you.
Wage of the employees.
I hear you, Commissioner. But at the same time, if we are looking at all of the employees, and we're having a hard time keeping and retaining good employees, then that just goes to show that we are going to have a problem keeping and retaining our first responders, which is why we're here for government. This is one of the biggest things that governments require to do. It's been over a year since that union contract was negotiated and approved. A lot has changed in a year, and that's, I just don't want them to be forgotten, and that's why I am just kind of focusing on it. So, thank you. I rest my case. Hopefully, they're hearing, and they will be back in full speed during budget discussions.
Anything to add to that, city manager?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Going to move on to 22-3159. City manager, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item, 22-3159, discussion and possible action regarding the status of proposed revisions to Chapter 59, Code of the City of Northport relating to parking and storage of certain vehicles on residential lots. We do have a presentation from our Planning and Zoning Division for the parking and storage of vehicles on residential lots. We are providing some amendments back to the code based on the last conversation that staff had with commission, so we will walk you through the presentation. I believe we have Lori Barnes, right here, from our Planning Division, and she will take it from here. Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Lori Barnes, Planning and Zoning Division Manager. This morning, we're going to have a discussion regarding our code provisions for parking and storage of vehicles on residential lots. I do want to mention that at the February commission discussion on this topic, there was conversation about including provisions for commercial vehicles. I want to say, for commercial properties, I want to say upfront, Elena Ray and I have discussed this, and rather than including a subsection in Chapter 59, Article 1, we'd like to incorporate provisions for parking in a separate article wherein we will include the International Property Maintenance Code standards for non-residential properties, and a separate subsection under that second article for the parking on commercial properties. We think it will be cleaner and better organized if we do so.
Oh, may I comment on that? It was brought about because of the police department, and they had issues. When I spoke with staff, it was to be separate, it wasn't supposed to be in that residential. They were supposed to be able to have forms that they could issue when they found the commercial trucks or trucks on the commercial property and such. I did speak with deputy chief, and we did talk about that international thing and having it looped in to that, because we're trying to head toward that direction. So that, like that wall over there, behind Popeyes and stuff like that, we have those standards, property standards lifted, and they have to comply. And so we did discuss it being part of that also. So is that what you're talking about, instead of making a separate section?
Yes, Commissioner Lu.
Is including it in that?
Yes, Commissioner Lu, thank you for that clarification. Not having been with the city when the conversation first began, and looking at the action details from the February meeting, it wasn't necessarily clear that the intent of the commission was to incorporate that into a separate, non-residential section. However, that was the direction that the director and I were heading also.
Okay, and I don't mind waiting until you get all of that, but that definitely needs to be put in for the police department. They can't form their own regulations. They can't go out and do stuff. We have to form the law, and then they enforce it. So it has to be done by us, so appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we're happy to work with Chief Morales and his team to put together some regulations that will work for them as far as enforcement in the city right-of-way, and will work for our code enforcement as far as enforcement on the private properties.
He would be here to speak to it himself if he wasn't having to be out of town for something with the police department, because he does feel that strongly in regards to it. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. A little bit of history, the city first adopted regulations for parking and storage in residential areas in 2018, and those regulations are codified in Chapter 59 of the Code of Ordinances. Still, the city is seeing issues as far as blight, nuisance, and damage to public right-of-ways related to parking on residential lots. The city commissions made it clear that they feel that additional controls are necessary, and we've prepared a draft ordinance that's been reviewed by the city attorney that incorporates some regulations to minimize the impacts while still affording reasonable allowances to property owners for parking of storage and vehicles on their residential lots. As previously discussed by commission, there are issues with parking of vehicles in the front yards in front of front doors, despite the fact of the existence of a paved driveway wherein there are no vehicles parked. There are issues with boat trailers, boats, and other equipment being parked in the city And there are issues with commercial vehicles being parked in residential neighborhoods. In January, commission discussed littering of cars, derelict vehicles, RVs, and individuals sleeping in RVs, and the commission agreed to allow Commissioner Lu to work with staff. Commissioner Lu met with code enforcement, code enforcement met with planning and zoning, and we began preparing some amendments. The commission again discussed this issue on February 1, and directed staff regarding storage versus parking in the right-of-way, screening, location of parking on residential lots, i.e. the front doors being blocked, unregistered vehicles, and the direction to move language regarding living in RVs to the camping ordinance, which Julie Bilia will present on after this item. Inasmuch as staff desired a code section that is easy to understand for staff and the public, and minimizes varying interpretations, we're proposing a repeal and replace rather than an amendment with a red line strike-through. It will be nearly impossible for anyone to follow the changes if we were to present it as a red line strike-through. We are not proposing any changes to the number of light-duty vehicles, recreational vehicles or boats on residential properties. We've clarified the allowances in a table so that they are easy for the public to understand. The draft ordinance will provide for definitions, differentiating light-duty vehicles from heavy vehicles, defining boats, defining trailers, and defining RVs. The draft provisions incorporate regulations to provide for parking or storage of heavy vehicles on residential lots, provided they are screened, as previously discussed by the commission. Screening would include fencing, or landscape buffering, or a combination of the two. Again, we're including those measurable standards in table format so that they are easily understood and less subject to interpretation. An example of the fencing or the landscaping that would buffer and minimize the visual appearance of the stored vehicles or parked heavy vehicles on residential properties. The draft ordinance prepared would prohibit unscreened heavy vehicles, would prohibit construction vehicles, except with an active building permit that includes a scope that would warrant those vehicles being on the site. The draft provides for prohibition of inoperable motor vehicles unless they are an enclosed structure or behind required screening. That does not include vehicles under repair. Vehicles under repair would be allowed for a period of 21 days before they are deemed inoperable under the code. This gives people an opportunity to take care of their vehicle repairs without being cited for an inoperable vehicle while their repairs are underway.
Excuse me. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How many days did you say would be by code for the inoperable?
21 days for vehicles under repair. Okay, if they exceed-
So you go to day 22, it's considered an inoperable vehicle, and then they get cited by code enforcement?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Parking in public right-of-ways would be prohibited, except for delivery, pickup, or service activity. The current code provisions and the discussed code provisions for parking in the right-of-way versus storage in the right-of-way provide significant opportunities for individuals to circumvent the regulations. You park a vehicle in the right-of-way for five days, you move it for one day, and you can put it right back where it was. Parking in the right-of-way or swales, and you'll find when the ordinance is presented, we've cleaned up the definition of public right-of-way, so it's clear. It includes the pavement, includes the swales, it includes the sidewalk area, it includes the drainage structures. This provision will prevent issues where our public right-of-way is being severely damaged, where our drainage structures are being damaged, where those damages are resulting in the functionality of our drainage systems. Vegetative swales slow the velocity of our storm water, and they promote the infiltration. They help alleviate flooding and erosion on adjacent properties. And once the right-of-way is rutted, those ruts divert the flow of storm water and send it in directions it was not intended to be sent. So when it comes to those provisions about the parking in the right-of-way, I understand that there will be some concerns in that regard. I do want to say that allowance of six vehicles on a residential lot, you will see areas where they're parked in the right-of-way instead of the driveway. Stacking of vehicles in a residential driveway is not unusual, and I can tell you, our own department director lives in a multi-generational household. They also live in an HOA where parking in the road or the right-of-way is prohibited. And while it may be somewhat inconvenient to have to move those vehicles around when someone you're parked behind needs to leave, it does prevent that damage to the public right-of-way, and the requirement for our public work staff to go in there and repair that, to grade the area, to resaw the area, so that our drainage facilities operate as intended.
So, for clarification, you're saying no parking in the right-of-way? Not cars, not pickups, like it is currently, you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, that is the recommendation of staff.
All right, so in these, the older areas of the city, the swale or the right-of-way is pretty flat. It's not steep or that. So they would have to drive in the driveway, get on the other side of the sidewalk on their property, and then park pretty much in the front yard. Because I know a lot of those houses, they have six cars that come home at night, and, you know, need to get parking, and they definitely are in the right-of-way. So they're going to have to find place on the side of the house, or in the front, or the back. No more, okay? Just wanted to get the understanding.
Commissioner McDowell, go ahead.
I have to take a deep breath, because the majority of our homes are built where you have your right-of-way, and then you go up a very steep embankment to get to your front yard. You cannot park on the sides of your yards, or even get to the backyard to park a vehicle. And in these multi-generational homes, you have nowhere else to park if you have company that comes in, or somebody that, you have nowhere to park because your driveway only allows for four people. You can't park on your subdeck, and you can't get to the side of your house. And now you're saying that you can't park in a swale? Is that what you're saying? I'm hearing the boat thing being revisited at this point. This is going to, this is going to create a heck of a lot of problems for our code enforcement and our residents.
The draft is prepared to prohibit the parking in the right-of-way and the swales because of the negative impacts that that entails. Now, the issues for code enforcement, yes, there's issue for code enforcement when we have parking in the swales. There may be issues with, for code enforcement with the parking in the driveways. And staff is happy to amend the proposed regulations in any manner in which the commission consensus directs. This is a difficult topic, and it's difficult to find a balance that provides allowances while still minimizing those impacts, minimizing the damage to the public right-of-way.
But the current code does not allow trailers, does not allow those big semi-trucks, does not allow RVs, does not allow construction equipment to be parked in the right-of-way already. Basically, the only thing that's allowed to be parked in a right-of-way by current code is a vehicle, car, or a light-duty truck. Those are personal vehicles. And I'm hearing that you're going to suggest that we remove even personal vehicles from being parked in the swale.
That is the staff recommendation.
Good luck.
Flash, ma'am.
Yeah, I, in a regular time, I would be supportive of no vehicles in the swale. But right now, we have a lot of people who are housing insecure, and- But right now, we have a lot of people who are housing insecure, and they're couch-surfing. And I just think that this particular year is not the right time to prohibit personal vehicles from the swale. I understand that long-term parking in a swale can damage the drainage and sort of impact the drainage. It's been going on for as long as this city has been here, and somehow we muddle through. This is just not the year to tighten up on that particular requirement. We have a house in our neighborhood, there's an older woman, I think it's her son, and a couple of friends. They work for Comcast. There are three Comcast trucks, and there's a motorcycle, and there are two or three personal vehicles. And in general, I go, "Meh." But like, right now, is, I just, it's not the right time to eliminate personal vehicle parking in the swale. I'd be very happy to revisit it in a year and sort of see where things are at, but right now, I just, I struggle with that.
Well, it couldn't even be worse within a year.
It could.
You know?
It could.
Commissioner White?
Yeah, I had a concern about that, too. How does this apply to when people have garage sales? That means they really can't park in the right-of-way, and when people come to pick up a pie? I don't know why, but they don't park in my driveway, but they can still park in the street.
The prohibition of parking is, does not include drop-offs, pickups, deliveries, those kind of things. So a garage sale, that's a temporary situation.
Oh, that parties, because I've been down Salford where they, there have been big parties, and they're like, there are parts like this all across there. So that would prohibit, this would prohibit? You can't have a big party in your house?
That'd be temporary as well, I would think.
Is it?
Yes, that would, there's, there's provisions in the draft that talk about temporary use of the right-of-way to access your property in and out. And I'm hearing from commission that there is a desire to provide some provisions for light-duty vehicles in the right-of-way, and we can certainly incorporate some suggested language in the draft when it comes forward in September.
Right, because my understanding is, as was mentioned, we already ha, maybe we don't. Do we already prohibit, like, you can't store a boat in your, on your right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay? And you can't just keep a trailer there. But I, I think the concern is when those things are brought home, like landscaping people, and they keep that parked in their, in the swale. But then, that's not a personal-
Correct.
-used vehicle. And those Comcast things, that's not personal use, that's their business. And I know somebody contacted me a while ago about, it wasn't Comcast, it was some other company, all their trucks are all over the front yard, and that's not personal anymore. That is their business, a business vehicle, and I guess it's just convenient to bring that home, but-
Sometimes they're required to bring it home because they're on call.
Exactly. They might be on call, that's their livelihood.
Right.
And I don't, I just don't want to, this year, I don't want to make it difficult for those people.
Right. See, I have a concern with, yes, and if you say it's already in there with boats, trailers, and those big utility trailers that are like, really long, yeah, those don't belong, even if that is, they have to bring it home. No, you can't bring it home, because that is something that shouldn't be parked out in the right-of-way. I agree with that, but.
I, I think it needs to just definitely be that small personal.
That's the way it is.
I mean, you're, you're allowed to bring your utility truck home, or your Comcast, or whatever, but don't park it in the right-of-way, park it in the driveway.
Yeah, move your car out to the right-of-way.
Exactly. Put your car out there.
Is there something that defines what's temporary? Is there?
That's one of the issues in the current code, is storage of vehicles, boats, et cetera, in the right-of-way is prohibited, and I may be misquoting the timeframe, I think it's three days or five days.
You have a three day, but that's for storage, right.
When you incorporate provisions, storage is defined as three days, that's very difficult for our code enforcement to track and enforce. All the individual needs to do is move that for one day, and it's no longer stored, which is why the, the provisions that you'll see in the ordinance discuss parking on a paved surface or in the side or rear yard, versus in the public right-of-way, versus in the front yard, blocking the front door, which was a big issue for some of the commissioners.
Right. So that could be addressed separately? Do you have that? It's prohibited to park a vehicle on your front yard? Do you already have that?
The provisions in the code discuss-
Okay, that already say that.
...discuss if you're parking in the front yard, it needs to be parking on a driveway.
Okay. All right, but that, what you just said about storage, yes, storage is defined as three days.
Under the current code.
But if you're talking about temporary parking, I, I think people could have a concern, what's temporary? If you have guests for the whole weekend, and they're parked, is that still temporary if they're there for the, for three days, or?
We'll address that as we bring the draft back to the commission. There are draft provisions currently for occasional use of the public right-of-way to access your property. In other words, if you're, if you're parking your boat in your side yard, we're not going to require a paved driveway apron, as long as the use of that right-of-way is not frequent enough to cause damage. So I think that we can address in the draft coming back, the parking of personal vehicles in the public right-of-way to the extent that the use is not intense enough or regular enough to cause damage to the public right-of-way.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, the code says trucks, buses, truck tractors, trailers, boats, and recreational vehicles are prohibited from parking on the berm shoulder of swale, right-of-way area. And there's also a provision in the code that says if I damage the swale, I got to fix it. So those things are already in the code. I can park my car in the swale, currently, and you're suggesting no. And I think you're hearing that's not going to fly.
Yes, ma'am, I am. You know, the, the intent that I have heard is, we, we don't like the parking in the swale, we don't like the blocking of the front doors. So we tried to prepare a draft to address commission concerns, enforceability concerns, but I am hearing loud and clear that some provisions for temporary parking in the swale is desired by the commission, and we're happy to put some language together moving forward for a draft ordinance on first reading.
Because if I can give an example, my neighbor has a big driveway, two vehicles, yet they parked a vehicle in the swale, plenty of room-
Oh, my word.
-killed the grass in the swale, which again, impacts drainage. So we certainly don't want that happening. It's silly if they have cement surfaces and they're parking in the swale. So, I don't know, you sort of need the wisdom of Solomon to figure out how, how do you sort of balance that out? If someone's driveway is loaded, and then there's another car parking in the swale, I tend to just go by and I don't look, because I figure what's going on. But if people have the driveway, they ought to be in the driveway, so I don't know how we legislate that.
I appreciate it even being discussed, because we are an incorporated city, and we should have property standards. We're not give-all, have-all, because we're not unincorporated, we are incorporated, so we have these property standards. It may be worded that the ones parked in the right-of-way are just the small personal car or pickup. Nothing else is allowed. I mean, could be you go that direction, instead of trying to name everything that can't. Just select what can be. My concern, sorry, it's not the ones that are well-onseptic, because they chose to build there, but it's for the people who are the multi-generational, or they have four people in the house that are working, and they all come home, and they've only got a single car garage with a single driveway.
They chose that.
So, so you can, but the economy does that, and right now, we're allowing them to park so that they can be in the right-of-way. So when they come home, they need somewhere. They're either going to pull up in their front yard, or they're going to pull in the right-of-way. And to me, I would rather see the right-of-way, you see that in the larger cities and stuff, when they come home, they park in the right-of-way, they don't drive up and park in their front yard. So I would rather see them doing that than littering the front yard. It's, it's the larger families, the multi-generational families, that I'm concerned about when they come home.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm sorry, does it say that right now, they can't park in, on the front yard?
They can't.
How is it now, in the ordinance?
The, the draft incorporates language that requires if vehicles are parked in the front yard, that they be parked in the driveway.
That it be a cement surface.
Oh, is that what, that's what you're proposing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Parked in the driveway.
Right.
Thereby prohibiting parking on the grass in the front yard, in front of the front doors.
Because I, I agree with that, they should not be parked on a front yard. That's just, it's really tacky. And for those who have septic concerns, too, I mean, shouldn't even be parking there. I had a question about boats. There's no limitation to how many boats somebody can store on their property? Is that, did I read that correctly?
It's a vehicle, it counts as, on the total.
It counts as a vehicle, so if they have one car, they can have five boats on trailers.
As long as it's on a trailer, that's correct.
Yes. Yes, and as long as it's parked in accordance with the regulations. If it's parked in the front yard, it needs to be parked on a hard surface, on the driveway. If it's parked in the side or the rear yard, then it may be parked on grass, provided it is not an easement.
All right, and I'm, I'm bringing this up because there was, and I think probably code enforcement was involved with a woman who, who called me, that there was somebody repairing boats next door to her, and he had, you know, five boats on trailers, and he claimed they were all his boats, but he was running a boat repairing business, and that was really, she eventually moved. This would not prevent that from happening, that somebody can continue to, to do that.
We would, we would invest in that as much as we can-
Yeah, I know.
-if he, if he shows us, he doesn't even have to show us, we'd have to have some proof.
But if we had something that limited boats and recreational, you know, vehicles, I mean, to, again, as, as Commissioner Luke was saying, this is a, we have property standards, and I don't see for someone to have, you know, three boats and, and an RV, and all this, everything they own but the kitchen sink, you know, out, out there.
But who are we to-
That's what, that's-
Who are we to say that? It's their property, and if, if they have six toys, if they have a vehicle and some toys, who are we as a government to say you can't have that on your property?
Because as, as Commissioner Luke said, we, we are, we have property standards, and we share lot lines. We have to come to some kind of a middle ground here, that what, what you're doing isn't, isn't intruding on, I'd like to-
And I agree. Where does your property rights end, and where do mine begin? That's been the, the adage and question for, I think, all of mankind. And that's why you have to find a balance and a happy medium, but at the same time, we can't say, oh, you're not allowed to have two boats and a, a car and a trailer parked in the front or side of your house.
Well, one of the reasons that we redid this stuff in 18 was trying to keep the individual from having to go to a storage and pay for storage.
Because there was none around.
And, and they're, well, that's changing, isn't it? But, so that was one thing. I mean, single individual, we can have toys, and so, and some of those toys are very nice-looking, and, you know, it, it don't detract from anything. So I don't have a problem. We've got the six vehicles, whatever they are, I have no problem. Like what you've stated, having it on-
An improved surface?
Well, actually, the, the concrete, you know, for some of those types of things, improved surface is off to the side, I believe. But the topic of the guy doing repairs, that's a different topic, other than parking.
Well, he's doing a business.
Exactly. So they have to go out and, and look at it as far as a business-
But he was saying they were his boats. He was fixing them up himself to sell as his person.
Well, that's where he puts the hammer down.
Well, you can run the tags, and if they're not registered to that home front, then you know that they're coming and going.
If I may, yeah. Local governments are now preempted by the state-
They are.
-as to regulation of home occupations.
Yes.
So unless there's noise, vibration, those types of negative impacts, we are prohibited from regulating a home occupation differently than we would regulate anyone else.
Right, and that was the concern here, because you're running boat engines, you know, all day long, and that's what she was hearing, and the fumes, and that goes beyond just doing little repairs from your home.
Right, so we would be able to enforce anything related to the noise ordinance, or if there are, and I defer to you, Kevin, if there are ordinances on the books regarding creation of fumes in residential neighborhoods, we could pursue code enforcement on those fronts.
Right. The only thing I'd like to add is specifically on the boat case, this goes for all code enforcement cases. At the end of the day, we have to present the case, and we have to prove it. If we can't prove it, and we go forward, we open up the city to potential possible lawsuit or some other negative impact. So at the end of the day, sometimes we'll go a little while with the case, but just before the hearing, if it calms down, and the person does, kind of comes into compliance, and it kind of settles down, we'll close the case. We'll err on that side of caution, because again, you can't present a case without facts or proof, and if we, you know, just because somebody says something's happening, doesn't always mean it is, number one, and number two, and more importantly, we do have to prove it. But we'll try to do the best we can. But usually, that, that being said, that's enough, maybe, if the person kind of feels like they're going to go forward with it, you know, they got me, and sometimes they'll just stop on their own. I don't believe we've had any other cases over there on that property.
No, because she moved.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Unfortunately, laws are a lot of anguish, and she moved. And when you say running the tags, you have to be able to see that tag, and as you said, you're not permitted to do that, to go on there and-
Yes, ma'am, we have no authority to run tags, or ask the police to do that.
It was just, you know, that the guy's saying, you know, these, these are my, all my boats, and that's it. And that, you had to take his word for it, because you could not say, let me see, let me take a picture, and that, and those cases, this is where it's frustrating, when we have nothing that we can put our finger on, to say, you can't do this because, because of this. And, and you know, and I understand that people want to have all their toys, and I am not of the thinking that you have to display all those toys on your front yard, and mainly boats become nothing more, more than lawn ornaments. They, they stay out there for 360 days out of the year, maybe they take it out. But that just brings down to me the whole integrity of the neighborhood, when you drive down a street, and there's trailers, and there's boats, and there's RVs, people have all crammed on their, on their driveway, and as you said, then there's no place for people to actually park, you know, just to even come over, because they have it all, it's their own little private storage lot, is what it is. And, and just one that, if you have toys, you have to also be able to pay, store those toys somewhere, and not necessarily on your, on your little quarter acre lot.
I think what staff is bringing forward is a compromise. It's tweaking what we have currently. There's not going to be 100% solution to every single issue, or, not going to. But front yard being a driveway, whether it's straight in, whether it's double, whether it's an arch, whether there's two coming in or whatever, that's only front yard. Side yard, backyard, totally different. Improved surfaces for the things on the side or the back, so I think it's a good compromise.
Currently, the code for front yard is, they have to be on an improved surface if it's parked in the front yard.
Their recommendation is that if it's in front yard, it's on the drive. Outside of it is improved.
The front yard, it says it has to be on-
You're looking at what's current.
That's what I said, it's currently.
So I said, they're recommending the other.
What's an improved surface? What, are you saying instead of an improved surface, it's just concrete?
We're defining driveway, and we- We're defining driveway and we are incorporating language that if it's parked in the front yard, it needs to be placed on a driveway.
So you're so we're totally eliminating parking anything in the front, regardless if it's on an improved surface, it can only be parked on a driveway?
Correct.
Well, this will be interesting conversation when you come back for first reading. Thank you.
Yeah, cause I park next to the driveway.
Thank you. It's an improved surface or you're parking next to your driveway?
I'm parking next to my driveway, not in the swale, on a flat surface.
You won't be able to.
Which doesn't have grass on it right now, but it's cause of truck is there.
This new code will say you're not gonna allow to because it has to be on a driveway.
Right, I ain't got enough room for all my vehicles on the driveway or else I'll be posting everything out there like Alice doesn't like.
You'll have to incre- increase your driveway then.
Yeah.
And is that is that would that be allowed? What they call what an apron when they just kind of extend that over, right? Would that be an improved surface and does it have to be concrete? Is that when some people put gravel?
Nope.
Well, my whole front yard is shale, so I mean, it is an improved surface, but it's not concrete.
And that's what we said when we we made the code in twenty eighteen, an improved surface, because when we looked.
Okay, so improved doesn't mean necessarily concrete.
She's saying it's gotta be concrete now if they when they come back. So we had a very similar situation, our driveway, and then we put rock and we enclosed, not enclosed, but we put a shoulder
Right.
around it and we put pile of rock there and we parked another vehicle on that side and now you're saying that would not be permitted and it'd have to be concrete.
No, she's the front of the.
It's in the front yard.
No, it's not, front yard is front of the house.
That's front, that's what the definition of front, front yard, front is.
Is that is that the front yard?
Yes.
Cause I think we've talked about this before. What is the front yard? Is it what just what's in front to, you know, the left or right of the driveway or is it that little apron area as well? Anything in the front, right?
Anything in the front. And the and the reason this this recommendation was brought forward, um, was to address those situations where you have someone put rock or gravel right in their front door and I think right in front of their front door. And I think the commission made it clear, you didn't like the visual of vehicles parked in front of the front door. So what then would prevent an individual from creating an improved surface, shale, rock, what may have you, and anywhere in their front yard in order to park a vehicle? Um, and again, if there is a desire on the commission's behalf to discuss an allowance for an approved surface that immediately that is immediately adjacent to the driveway and not obscuring the front doors of the home, we can certainly craft language, um, to that effect to address that concern on commission's behalf. And if I have misinterpreted the conversation that has previously occurred, um, I beg forgiveness. When this conversation was first initiated, I was not here with the city. So we're we're doing our best to bring recommendations that A, we think are enforceable and that B, addresses the concerns that we're hearing from the commission.
Well, and I also think too, when we discussed this, part of the parking in front of the front door had to deal with the numbers on the house and first responders not being able to see those numbers because a vehicle may be parked right in front of them.
And not being able to access an entryway.
Or entryway or whatever to get in, so I I can agree with that, absolutely.
And that is what we ended up with in the meeting, was having staff define or look at what they desired. When I spoke with code enforcement, that's the last time I was involved with this, uh, it was her recommendation, have it on the drive. But the front yard was the sides of the house forward, from the end of the house over to the side, the side yard. So she was talking about just strictly from the ends of the house out to the road as the front. So having the improved surface on the on the side, that that was, she was viewing it as the side yard and improved surface was fine there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it had changed since I talked with code enforcement.
Okay, we'll work to navigate that. Um, right now, the definition of front yard in all of our codes incorporates anything beyond the building frontage. So I don't think we wanna necessarily change the definition of front yard specifically for this parking ordinance, but I think that we can draft some language that speaks to what you all discussed this morning, um, that will give that, um, clarification as to the location of parking in the front yard on a driveway or an immediately adjacent paved surface such that it's not placed where it blocks the front doors or the, um, address or the address number.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay, and I I had another, well, I don't think, yeah, we went to there. I have another question when we're ready.
I'm happy to answer now, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I had some concerns and this is for my fellow commissioners too, about the landscaping choices. You have for the landscape buffer, if there would be a way to, um, adjust some of those, if you wanna go to that slide, um, I don't know where the those came up, you know, why those were chosen. Um, I'm, you know, I'm a big advocate and as you know, probably for Florida friendly and and having plant choices that people are gonna be successful with in this area and, you know, some of those are just, it's not going to mean what what we're trying to do here is is create a a buffer and if people are gonna spend money and time to put these things in, you want them to actually grow and and do what they're supposed to to do. So I wonder if there's any room for for adjustment here.
Absolutely, the the species recommendations, um, came from actually Elena Ray, um, who who was, um, in her career, an environmental, um, planner and from our arborists due to the ability for those specific types of species to become dense. Um, but I think that we are absolutely open to any suggestions or specific asks on behalf of the commission as to those particular plant species.
Good, because I I like it, cause I know what you're going for and things like, um, you know, American holly, bottle brush, you know, that's very brittle and they're always sad looking because they're they are brittle. I'm sorry, they are. I have I have a big one in my front yard only because my mom planted it, so it's never going to come down, okay? But it is a nightmare. Uh, pink trumpet is actually, I think, the the tababoya, correct? What you're that they're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is those pink trees we have on some, and those are nice. A sweet bay magnolia, that doesn't do well in this area. You know, some of the shrubs, in fact, this was just in the paper yesterday, Ralph Mitchell, who is the the, um, extension service director for Charlotte County, he's but he does, uh, every week he highlights something and the Simpson stopper is such a great native, um, hedge. This is, people are successful with this and it's also tree-like, um, which would be perfect. It could be used as either a small tree or a large shrub. Yeah, it it gives you that dense foliage, which is what you're looking for. Um, even a crepe myrtle, if they're not crepe murdered, all right, if they're allowed to. In fact, one of the the slides that you you have of the the fence, uh, the hedge, those are crepe myrtles behind it that have actually allowed to be trees, which is great. Um, so that should should be on the list. You know, it's not native, but it's very drought tolerant and it's a it's a great choice. Um, cocoa plum, I don't know why that's not on there. Cocoa plum is a native, um, shrub and it's it's the namesake to one of our waterways. Um, they're planted all around, um, is that called the cocoa plum complex that by Dallas White Park? Is that the name of that? You know, those condos that are right next to the scout house?
Table trees?
No, no, it's it's that other one.
On the other side.
Yeah, isn't that called the cocoa plum something? I think that's their name.
Cocoa plum gardens, maybe? I I don't know.
Because they have all cocoa plums planted there. They're great shrub shrubs. Uh, you know, wax myrtle is is again, a great na- native, uh, shrub that is in our right of ways, but it's very dense, cause this is what you're looking for. You're looking for something that's gonna block block that. So I just would like to to give people choices, um, of what they're gonna be successful with because I know even with our own, um, tree list that we had, you know, people would come to me and say, they planted this tree cause it's on that list, but it's really not good for this area and it it dies. So if it were gonna suggest something, they really, I think, should be things that are gonna do the job that we're trying to get it to do, so, um.
We're happy to incorporate those changes. Um, in the draft ordinance, there are footnotes that, uh, speak specifically to, um, similar species. Um, so the the table wouldn't mandate
Right.
if someone wanted to propose
Something else.
a different species that was similar, we'd have the arborist take a look, make sure that, um, those species they're proposing will be dense enough to
Right.
provide the required visual screening.
Right.
Um, so happy to incorporate
Okay.
those changes when we bring it back.
Cause I know a lot of people, their go-to is bamboo, which is really, it's great until it starts to really grow, okay? Then you're really, it's it's high maintenance, so, but if they said, yeah, I'll take care of it, great, you know, bamboo is is, uh, very drought tolerant and Florida friendly, but it's it's a lot of work.
This is a suggested list, correct? I mean, it's not required.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, the footnotes to the table will incorporate language that, um, allows provision of alternate species on approval by the arborist.
Yeah, cause when you look at this, if people are, they wanna know, what do I need to get this done? And if you have this list, they're gonna say, okay, let's let's get this and and if you're gonna do that, it should be really something, again, that they're going to have success with and it's going to achieve what they're trying to achieve, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And I think that's it.
Moving on, uh, the draft ordinance, um, like our current ordinance, will include language, uh, regarding property owner responsibility as to damage of the right of way. Um, we have clarified that language. We have incorporated, um, language that provides for nuisance nuisance abatement by the city in the event that the property owner refuses or neglects to repair the damaged right of way, i.e. grading out the rods, planting the sods so that the drainage facility functions as intended. Um, so we strengthened strengthened that language somewhat so that the city has enforceability and has a, um, has a procedure to follow that will guarantee that the taxpayers as a whole are not bearing the responsibility, uh, for repairing right of way damages, um, that were the result of a property owner's actions.
Pete?
So is there going to be a provision that also protects the property owner if a heavy truck has to move over and goes into the swale to avoid something in the roadway, whatever reason, parks in the swale and they damage the right of way, not the property owner? Is it's very hard to prove when I'm gone at work and I I leave and my right of way is in fine condition and I come home and it's destroyed because of whatever reason and then I get a nasty gram saying I have to fix it and it's like, wait a minute, I didn't qua- I didn't cause it.
I think that would go to investigation and enforcement. Um, if we have an issue like that arise, generally speaking, it's the rainy season, it's wet, it's clear that it's one huge rot likely created from a truck coming off the road. I think code enforcement can exercise that discretion. Um, if need be, we can incorporate some language for reporting for an individual who has damage caused to the right of way, um, not due to their own fault, that they can report that damage to the public works department, um, and thereby avoid any code enforcement action for damage to the right of way. What are your thoughts, Kevin?
No. Respectfully, so as it stands right now, this does happen once in a while, somebody will call it, we'll go to, someone else will call it, we'll see it. We typically address it with the property owner. I'm not saying they did it. They may say they didn't do it, but at the end of the day, they're responsible for their property and I think Julie will back me on this. I don't think public works is gonna go over there and fix it at cost to the city, correct?
Chuck, speak, public works director. We get these calls all the time. My swale has been been banged up or there's there's a swale, whatever it may be. Um, I can tell you that I have yet to be, Julie's been here for director much longer than me, but I have yet had a resident say, yes, I made that damage. I caused that damage. I could go by there and see that same car parked there every day. When they finally start parking in the driveway and the the water's backed up because now it's rainy season, they never parked in the swale. That was some stranger came by and parked there. That was whoever it was, so, um, typically we have the burden to fix that because we really don't have any proof that their vehicle is there. Unless someone shows us a picture that that vehicle parked in that spot, um, everyone will say it was a neighbor, it was some random person that parks, you know, the night, it was a truck, whatever it may be, anybody but them. So we do bear that cost.
And you're really talking about somebody who's been parking for an extended period of time that caused that kinda damage. If somebody just runs off the road, it's unlikely it's going to be that much of a problem.
Depends on where it is.
You know how soggy this place gets?
Over to the high school.
Just just go over, yeah, in front of Aaron Creek. It doesn't take much there.
If they don't know by now not to go.
There's a lot of people pulled off there. There's a lot of people that pull off there not knowing how soggy it is and how how wet it is because an emergency vehicle is coming towards them or behind them and they're trying to get out of the way and then they get stopped.
Isn't there a sign there now? Didn't you put a sign up there that says something like?
We we did put signs up.
Yeah, I thought so.
But still, they gotta get out of the way for emergency vehicles.
You will sink in that area.
But we typically have those that have, if we see that someone's parking there, we'll go have a conversation, our planner schedulers, public works, we'll go have that conversation with them, explain to them that they're responsible for that damage. Uh, typically, they'll then stop. Dry season, people get used to parking there. Then the first couple of times they pull in, in wet season, it it does substantial damage to the swales. And sorry, discussed what that does to the drainage system and and the flow of water.
Yeah.
I'd be more concerned about the culverts that are squished and not able to have water flowing than than parallel parked ruts, cause there's a lot of culverts that
Sure.
get squished in or collapse over time and.
What you have though, when you park vehicles and for an extended amount of time, you won't have the grass, which has been discussed, um, you will have that sediment that will also build up the end of the pipes. So that causes a blockage downstream of where they're parking.
Good point.
Yeah.
Those bent culverts are their responsibility too, correct?
Correct.
Keeping them cleaned out, cleared, yeah.
The driveway and the and the pipe under the driveway is an improvement put in by the homeowner, so it's their responsibility to keep it clean and clear. Uh, if the pipe is in good shape, we do have the capacity to go out and blow that out, to maintain our system. If it's not in good shape, we will then turn it over to code because we don't want to damage the pipe and then have to replace it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And and that is something too about the homeowners maintaining, having to maintain that swale, that it wouldn't hurt to have that information be put out there every now and then, because I I get calls from people that are unaware that they're supposed to to keep that clear, that the drainage pipe that, you know, and and builds up and and or they wanna know why, you know, the city doesn't come out. I said, that's your responsibility, why is that? So apparently, they don't know, so, um.
We do put that information. Some know they don't like it anymore.
That's it more than anything.
And it's difficult for a homeowner, especially one that comes in and buys a property that's already established
Yeah.
because the swale's been let go.
And they've seen and they've seen it's very well maintained and everything and they're just assuming, oh, the city's doing this, yeah.
Right, and it's it's, um, it's difficult, they don't have the equipment to do it when it comes to cleaning out the pipes. They can clean the pipe ends, but they really can't get the centers. Um, we will assist with that. We also do put out on social media, uh, just before rainy season, we'll put out a kinda this is what to expect and what the city's responsibilities and what the homeowner's responsibilities are.
All right, that's good.
Are we done?
How much more you got?
The last item is removing the language regarding living in RVs from the parking and storage chapter, because that chapter is about parking and storage, not living. That will be incorporated into the camping chapter. So if I can summarize the consensus of the commission, we're looking to incorporate language that allows parking on improved surfaces immediately adjacent to a driveway in the front yard, provided house numbers and front doors are not blocked by that parking location. We're looking to refine the list of the species for landscape buffers. And we will be looking to, subject to legal review, bring this back to commission for first reading September 13th.
And the vehicles on the right-of-way.
Vehicles on the public right-of-way, the temporary parking of personal vehicles in the public right-of-way. Any other questions or directions?
Do you wanna get formal consensus for that?
Can. Terrific.
But we do have public comment. Do you have any online public comment?
I do not.
Okay. Jeffrey Scott, sir?
This was a very good discussion, I'm pleased to say. I support the enforcement of property standards. Presently, there are numerous neighborhoods where code violations occur without any corrective action being taken by the city. With that being said, neighborhoods throughout our city resemble a fixer-upper community, not a safe and inviting neighborhood. And that includes the neighborhood I live in. The physical image of the city must be preserved and enhanced, not in a state of constant decline. And that's what's occurring over the years here, in the older neighborhoods, to include mine. It's very important code enforcement issues are taken seriously and in a manner where compromise should lead to a better outcome. Cooperation by all stakeholders must be the focal point moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you need a visual census to give you that information direction, are you good?
I am good, sir.
Good. We're good. All right, we're gonna be moving on after a break.
I was gonna say.
It's 11:10, let's come back at 11:25 and then we'll finish everything up. So 15-minute break. Just in case.
Back in session.
Already worked out for this, the phase that we're working on currently.
All right, moving on to twenty-two dash thirty-one forty-eight, City Manager, this is your item.
Vice Mayor, this item is the discussion and possible direction regarding the status of revisions to Part Two Code of the City of Northport, Florida, Chapter Forty-six, offenses articles five, camping, and I will turn it over to Julianne Belia from the City Manager's office, who is joined by Kevin Reducci in order to facilitate the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. For the record, Julianne Abilia, Assistant City Manager. During the City Commission regular meeting held on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, the following items were discussed with regard to camping: sanitation facilities, camping locations, recreational vehicle uses versus tent use, pop-up campsites with makeshift fencing, all-terrain vehicles, and fire and safety hazards. At the conclusion of the discussion, Commission provided the following consensuses: one, add the definition of lodging out-of-doors and distinguishing between lodging out-of-doors and housing. There was consensus that campers are required to obtain written notarized permission from property owners to include start and end dates and to be able to provide to a police officer. Two, out-of-door camping shall not be permitted on front and side single-family district or agricultural district properties and include ravage regarding rear yard camping. Three, include maintenance provisions of the property regarding proper disposal of trash and unlawful accumulation of debris. Four, include provisions that onsite sanitation facilities such as permitted access to the permanent restroom facilities or temporary restroom facilities with routine maintenance and disposal by a qualified vendor shall be required. And five, direct staff to review and bring back to Commission a camping permit. A motion was made to bring back an agenda item in December to address draft policy provisions of first reading for the camping ordinance based on the consensuses received and to discuss policy points related to ATVs. I've been working for several months now with staff and the Assistant City Attorney Golan on the revisions to what we will now call the lodging out-of-doors ordinance rather than a camping ordinance, and we will be presenting this information on our efforts. The proposed ordinance is currently being reviewed at the City Attorney's Office. The first reading of the ordinance is anticipated on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the second reading on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. What we've been doing over the past year is not only preparing the ordinance, we've actually gone through several drafts with staff, reviewing, having staff meetings, including Commissioner McDowell has been helping us with this effort. The very first thing we did, however, was take a tour of some areas where we have camping. Primarily, we went out to the east, northeast end of the city off of Yorkshire Street. At this time, I would like to introduce Kevin Reducci, the City's Co-Enforcement Manager, to please provide a PowerPoint presentation to Commission.
So, Kevin Reducci, Co-Enforcement Manager for the City, sorry I didn't identify myself before. The pictures, the slides, you're about to see our actual...
They're live.
Yes.
This is what's going on out east in the city of Northport. All these are real pictures. It's nothing from another town or anything like that. Just a quick overview, I'll just say this, that a lot of these areas, lots are being lived on by people that don't own the lot. That's an issue right then and there. A lot of the people that own these lots are out of state or in some other part of the state. Some of them are even out of the country. They have no idea what's going on on their property because they don't come and visit it. There's usually a lot of debris left behind, which poses a problem for the city and for health issues. There's generally, there's no system for them to get rid of waste, and I'm talking about human waste or motor oil or anything like that, and it's an environmental issue as well. Also, on that property, there's, in addition to that, there's no water or sewer. The only water they usually collect is maybe rainwater or whatever they can bring in, but they don't really have enough potable water to sustain themselves over a long period of time. If we can get them to relocate to another site, you're just pushing the problem around. They may end up leaving that site and leaving things there. Then again, that becomes a problem for the property owner to have to rectify and usually cost some, a lot of money to do that. In addition to co-enforcement, the Police Department has helped us out tremendously, and we work in tandem with them. We have a pretty good idea of who's out there. Just an aside to that, some of these people are, have issues related to maybe mental health or drug usage, or they may be wanted by certain jurisdictions for law enforcement type of situations, so there's always that thrown in as well. There's also some bit of land clearing going on out there because obviously the day that this, we were out there and we saw, I think you were out there with us that day, the inspector who goes out there pretty much on a daily basis takes us out there on a field trip, and they're putting this between, in a lot, just like, you know, crushing it through the wood, the trees and everything. So, who knows what they're running over, tortoises, or, you know, any kind of other types of wild animals. That becomes an issue because if it was done right, you'd pull permits, we'd go check it, make sure that things like that are being handled correctly. They're not. The people that live out here also generally offered services through the Police Department and Social Services, and I believe like ninety-nine percent of them refuse. So, they're out there claiming they have nowhere else to go, but they don't let us help them to get them somewhere where they'd be probably better off. And the last thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, we try our best to take everybody's specific needs into consideration, but at the end of the day, it's becoming a problem out there that we're kind of, we're not, we're basically treading water. Pretty much Billy goes out there every day, Inspector Kitty, and there's not a day that he doesn't come back. Even if he, if one person or one group moves, two or three others will, they'll find two or three other new ones. So, it's not, we're not even even. We're behind the eight ball with this. Just want to do the slides, Julie. This bus is gone. The lady there had a baby, and they felt that it wasn't a place where they could live anymore, so they did move. This is a current site. This is a quick video. This is what they call Big Ney. This is about eight lots. That, it's like, basically like a commune out there. You notice all the vehicles. I don't know where all the people are, but there's a lot of debris out there, a lot of vehicles. When they, a lot of that has been cleaned up, but they actually have left a couple vehicles and a lot of debris out there. This is more of Big Ney. This is a different site that there's a Conex container out there. We've notified the person that owns that. He has no intention of moving it. He does own the property, but it's still an issue because he needs to have a building permit to start. These are all undeveloped lots. They need building permits to, to do any work out there. On the left, I believe that's a car upside down. Obviously, that's a problem. It's big. It's hard to remove. Who knows what kind of contaminants are contaminating the earth, and this is some of the debris. This is another picture of Big Ney. Again, I think this is the only trailer there right now as it stands, but you can see all, you know, at one time that was all enclosed vegetation. Obviously, it's all gone. So, who knows how many trees were killed, how many trees were removed, how many gopher, tortoises were killed, how many, or displaced and things like that. So, that's an issue. That's what I said before. This is just two slides. I believe the one on the right is still valid. I think the one on the left has been removed. Obviously, you can see structures and things of that nature. None of it's been permitted. It can't be permitted. You need engineering. It has to meet wind mitigation. You know, for hurricanes, there's no water. There's no power. It's pretty tough going out there to live like that. This is a brand-new one. This is probably three weeks old. As you can see, this person's trailer, I'm not even sure how that's set. It's basically in the right of way there, and he just pulled in, and I don't know if he stopped there. Inspector Kitty's been working with him. Hopefully, we're going to be able to get that out of there sooner than later. This one's probably the most, the least obtrusive. This is, this is, this would be great. This is okay. This is somebody living in a tent. There's no, there's no vehicles. There's no structures. Somebody's just out there living. Really, I don't think that's even a violation, to be honest with you.
What about sanitation?
Obviously, on this one, you can see a lot of debris, and again, I don't believe this one is owner-occupied in terms of the owner of that property doesn't, is not the person living there. And these are long-term. They're not there for the weekend. These people are living out there. This is just a normal, regular house in the city of Northport. The only problem with this is that pole to the, to the, to the right of it is probably where their property line ends, and that trailer is probably on the other person's property. So, if it was overmore, he's really parking that on an undeveloped lot, which happens a lot in the city, but that's, and it's also not on a...
Improved surface.
Yeah, improved surface.
That's it.
That's it. If you have any questions for Julie or I?
I just, a comment. I thought it was interesting, that one picture that says no trespassing.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Okay, private property.
Yeah.
Is somebody living in that?
In which one?
That, that last one. That's, you said it's not on the improved surface.
I'm not sure if somebody's actually living in that. I mean, that does happen occasionally, but...
It has a house.
Yeah.
And you've been having...
If they stay there for the prescribed time, it's not an issue. I think Billy just took that as an example of, he's almost good. He's just on someone else's property, but at least he's in that ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
He or she.
Is this just for undeveloped?
All these are, all these except for the left.
But is this ordinance only applying to undeveloped properties right now? It has nothing to do with camping in your backyard? Or is this...
We are going to, it will be for both.
Yeah.
When we're finished, it'll be for both. Yep.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, but we're not trying, just in case anybody's listening, we're not trying to stop your kid from having a campout in the backyard, you know, on a Saturday evening. That's not what this is about.
No.
This, this is far above and beyond that. It is allowed to camp in your backyard overnight. There's no law that says you can't. We can't regulate that kind of enjoyment of your property. It's when it's infringing, because it's not your property, is where we're running into the problems. And, and I have gone on multiple field trips, and I'm very grateful for the time with co-enforcement and everybody else. The pictures just paints a little bit of the picture. When you see it actually in person, you go, how can people live like this? And how can people do it on somebody else's property? And it, it becomes, it's getting worse and worse each time I, I go out there and just kind of drive around. I don't suggest driving around because you're going to get lost. So, any update on what is being changed in the camping ordinance? Are we just completely replacing what's existing?
Everything that the Commission has asked us to put in the ordinance, we're putting in there, but we have to make sure it's in compliance with various state legislature and things like that. We're still in the process. Staff has gone over, Ms. Burns, Lori Barnes, she has provided some suggestions from her viewpoint, and we're in the process of routing that amongst the other staff. And once that's done, we're going to forward the proposed final draft to the City Attorney's Office for their review, understanding that it depends on what staff is going to propose in relation to what the various laws are, what we can and can't do. So, it's a little difficult for us to say right now exactly what's going to be in the ordinance as far as how it's going to all be finalized, because there's so many different variables when it comes to private property rights, and, for example, people experiencing homelessness, that type of thing. There's all different forms of state legislature we have to be mindful of, that whatever staff prepares, that the city's legal department will review and make sure we comply with it. So, we are trying our best to meet all the consensuses of the Commission in some fashion with the final ordinance. That's where we're at right now.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple of questions to clarify for me, because this conversation was a while ago. When I think of this problem, I see two very distinct situations happening. So, clearly, what you've showed us today are examples of chronic homelessness, people taking advantage of other people's property. This might sound weird. To me, that's sort of an easier problem to, well, it's not an easier problem to deal with, but it's sort of one set of issues. The, the other thing that I've seen going on is folks have a camper, maybe it's on an improved surface on their property, and someone is staying there for part of the year, maybe an in-law or kid or somebody. What I'm also starting to see are campers in driveways, someone who might be working but has lost their apartment, and so they're, they're staying with a friend or a relative in a camper in a driveway. So, I see two very distinct situations.
Yes, ma'am.
Which problem are we trying to solve?
Both.
Both.
Yes, ma'am, and we will have different criteria for each situation.
Because it, it... So, just a lot of things swirling in my mind. We have, in the city of Northport, some recently homeless people who are working, living in their cars for couch surfing and working. And because they're newly homeless, they have no idea what help might be available to them through social services or through nonprofits in the area. I'm just wondering if we should consider if someone has a relative who seasonally comes to visit them, and they're on an improved surface on the homeowner's property, might there be a special permit for that? And I'm also thinking if there's someone newly homeless and a friend or a relative allows them to stay again on their property or in their driveway, rather than living in their car or being on the street, might there be some type of special permit? The benefit of that would be we could identify residents of the city who are in trouble and connect them to social services. So, I guess what I'm putting out there is, might there be a temporary permit for this activity? And I'm more concerned about the homeless workers, because I'm seeing more and more of that in the city. If someone is good enough to allow them to stay on an approved surface or in their driveway in a camper, if they can apply for a special permit and invite that person to connect with social services, it's almost equivalent to what our hot team does with the homeless, you know, sort of keeping a database and, and trying to correct the situation that's causing them to be homeless. I'd, I'd be very supportive of something like that. I just put that in a different bucket than I do the pictures that we're seeing today.
Yes, ma'am. So, we've had numerous discussions on this very issue, and that's why we have involved Planning and Zoning and the Police Department and Social Services. And it's just, it's just a symptom of a problem.
Right, right.
This, this is a symptom of a problem, and we are in the process, as you know, of, of looking at different alternative types of housing. For example, affordable housing. What does that look like? You know, can we partner with folks? Can we get companies to come in the city? Traditionally...
All of those solutions are two and three and four years away.
But traditionally, some, some more, more immediate-type fixes, you have to have a traditional home. No, you don't. You can have something smaller. You know, now we're looking at things like tiny homes, the Conex boxes, all those types of things. That becomes very important because somebody not being able to afford, for example, a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, which used to be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. That being said, maybe they can afford a home for fifty or seventy-five thousand. So, these are things, and they do take time. You're right. But in the meantime, we do have to, and we recognize, we're probably going to be headed to a recession. We have to be realistic about this, to say, no, we're not going to allow it. You can only stay there a week or two weeks. It's going to be unrealistic. So, we have had discussions recently about allowing a certain amount of time, let's say, I don't know, thirty, sixty days, something like that, something to be fair, because you're not only going to have grandma and grandpa or aunts and uncles coming down to visit, you're now going to have living, you know, alternative living accommodations. So, that being said, we are looking at all those things and working with, closely with Planning and Zoning for inclusion in the Unified Land Development Code rewrite as well. So, that, those are the types of things we're trying to, as we finalize this ordinance, before we bring it to Commission in September.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, to piggyback off what Vice Mayor was saying, I'm also seeing where people have an RV. It's sitting on the side of their house. It's legally in the correct placement and stuff by code, and they're renting it out to strangers because it's additional income for them, and it's a lower cost of housing than the traditional kind of doing things. So, to me, there is a difference between allowing your family or your child or grandma and grandpa, whoever, family staying in that RV on the side of your house versus a stranger who's staying on the side of your house.
Well, and, and that's, and that's worthy of discussion.
Yeah.
Because is the goal to try to get folks that don't have anywhere to go, at least there's a place to go. And I think we've had discussions about maybe renting out a room, you know?
Right.
Renting out part of your home, or if you did have a camper, is there harm in it not being a family member and renting it to somebody, a stranger, for example, somebody that you've just met? So, it's all, it's all part of, it's all part of something that this, as a city... So it's all, it's all part of, it's all part of something that this, as a city, we're trying to solve. And the end goal is to get people off the street.
The other thing is, is the code enforcement. We had put in the budget last year for an additional code enforcement. I think we were starting to see because of the impinging growth ordinance, because of the things that were happening out, out in Yorkshire, the, the camping, taking place on private property. Whether it's you on your own property or somebody else on somebody else's property. To help code enforcement, to be able to stay abreast of all of this. I don't know, was that a successful position? Was that, is that being revisited? Is it being revamped? What's going on with that?
We did hire an additional code enforcement officer. He just started a couple of weeks ago. He came from road and drainage. Inspector, hi- his primary responsibility, he's gonna be the one that is on top of all new constructions. We're having a lot of problems with new construction against neighbors saying, you know, it's noisy. They're coming too early, they're working too late.
They're not cleaning it.
Drainage, all those things. So he's primarily doing that. My plan was, and it's actually working, is Inspector Kitty, who's on vacation right now, is the inspector that handles all camping. We're starting to get the inspectors to get into the general things that they do. But they have to all do one or two things exclusively, cause I think it works better. They have a, Inspector Kitty has a very good relationship with the police. He meets with them regularly. Sometimes I meet with them too, we've had a couple of meetings. He prepares a very detailed report that I make sure Julie gets, I don't know, every couple of weeks. That lists all the campsites and the progress and the, you know, what's going on with each case. So it's one person, it's one message, it's one person with all the knowledge. And it has been working very well. So there is a person, even if Inspector Kitty leaves or whatever, there will be one person continually that will handle the camping, even if it changes with the new ordinance.
So your department's fully staffed now?
It is ma'am. We have five inspectors.
Excellent, how's George doing?
He's doing good. Doing well.
Excellent, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I know we had talked in the last conversation about there was some housing out there that people were allowing people to tent and live in tents in their backyards, multiple tents. Is that going to be addressed as well in this ordinance? It's kinda cleared itself up there pretty much.
That, yes, that will be addressed in this ordinance.
Cause I know there was a lot of bickering between the neighbors out there.
Yes.
And their stuff was getting trashed from these individuals and stuff. So, you know, something like that. And my other question was, you had mentioned ATVs in the beginning of the thing. What are you looking to do with the ATVs and all that out in Yorkshire?
We're gonna have to deal with that with a separate ordinance. That will, that will not be able to be coupled in with this ordinance, but that will be our next task.
Okay, and that's fine, because I know we were getting to that.
Getting to that, yes sir.
And I know that when I was talking with Garrison and Morales, that was something that they are very, very concerned about there.
Yes sir, yeah, that'll be our next ordinance that we'll work on together with them.
Okay, and that's fine, cause I know you had mentioned it in the beginning.
Yes, it was, it was, yeah, it was a directive from commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have?
Commissioner Luth.
And I can see where you're going with allowing people to stay in the RVs in people's houses and stuff. The difference between a tiny home, container home, any of those others that we talked about, they're permitted and you have the infrastructure going to them. And a RV or something like that is portable. So there would have to be some sort of permit.
Yes ma'am.
An oversight of something that is just temp, you know, portable. Because the utilities, the infrastructure of that RV has to be maintained if somebody's living in it. In a tiny home, you gather the permit and it's over and done. So I don't personally myself mind a stranger staying in it. I don't wanna see that sewer pipe going out to our swale.
Exactly.
And we have seen that. And how you would regulate that or whatever, don't know. You guys have to put your heads together, but some kind of permit for that to me. Would they charge? I mean, there's people charging $1,200 to people to stay in their RVs right now.
Within the ordinance, they would be required to get a permit and will have specific criteria for those types of instances.
Okay, thank you. The ones out in Yorkshire where somebody's on somebody else's property?
No.
Can't have it.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
If they refuse help, that's their choice. They are out. But for somebody to open their RV on their property, that's a different scenario. I know there are some people who own property out there and they like to come every once a month or whatever and visit their property.
And we have that. We have that also, right Kevin?
And they rent a camper and they stay. And the, the dude who had the container out there. I understand that a little bit, you know? He's keeping things there for when he comes. I don't know, it might even be a shovel or whatever. I understand that a little bit. I have a compassion for somebody who has their property in having something there. But somebody else's property, get off.
Just wanted to make this clear, and I should've said this before when we were doing the parking. Our, my inspectors have a, a lot of discretion. And if they're given an explanation to why something is happening, even if it's a violation, that's taken into account and it's there almost always a solution. Usually the solution is time, obviously, for all this stuff, for parking and for this type of situation. So they'll allow them time 30, 50, 60 days to get their affairs in order to come into compliance, whatever the violation is. After that, at some point, it's like, you know, you gotta, gotta get going here. Either one, you know, if it, if it doesn't get resolved, it ends upstairs here in the hearing. That's the only few ways we can rectify these. And the ones that are complaint driven by somebody else, by a neighbor or, or not by the inspector, they're more, our discretion's limited just a little bit because they're the ones complaining. And if they don't get their pound of flesh, they end up calling you guys, which is their right. But then it filters back to us. So when it's our own cases, we can extend it. We can extend it anyway. We'll always give you an explanation as why it's taking so long. Cause there's two sides to every story. And just like you said, there are people that are having problems, challenges right now with the economy and things of that nature. So we will try to work with them. The slides that you saw are pretty much the worst case scenario. But it is a consideration because we're like right here with it. It's, we're at a tipping point and eventually we're gonna lose the war out there if we don't get some sort of control. And I think the police would agree with me. They, you know, you also have to think, there's a lot of EMS calls out there, there's fire calls. There, all those pictures you just talked about, a sewer pipe going into the swell. Where do you think all that stuff's going? It's just going, there is, there's just going on the ground. Those are the, the challenges and the considerations that we have to manage.
And I know a gentleman whose daughter is building out there. And she's doing everything right. 750,000 dollar house that she's building. Somebody pulled in a gooseneck on the lot beside her. You know, violating every kind of code that we have. It's, it's not fair to those who are trying to do it right.
Correct.
Commissioner McDowell.
Regarding the permit for the RVs that are being used when there's a principal structure on the property. Maybe when they go to renew the permit, they have to prove that their subject, whatever, their holding tank for waste has been properly emptied. Usually you can't just go empty it somewhere, you have to pay to have it emptied. Maybe they have to provide proof of that so that way then they can get a renewed permit? I don't know, but how else are we going to know that, yeah, that stuff is being emptied correctly? Unless they have some type of documentation. I don't know how long it takes for RVs to have a holding tank. I'm sure each RV has a different size holding tank and stuff like that. But the biggest thing with the RVs, regardless of who's renting them, is the sanitation part of it.
Yes, absolutely.
Because, I don't know. It, it's, it's a very difficult situation. And you, you have to be respectful of what people are going through. And it is difficult times. I mean, everybody in this room knows somebody that is going through difficult times. But at the same time, we have to make sure we're making sure that things are safe for the surrounding in the community at large. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner White.
Yeah, I, I still have some concerns about the, the RV camping on the property, even with the permitting. Always, it can be permanent. I mean, they can always have an RV even after, you know, this, this crunch is over. Somebody can just permanently say, I'm gonna have an RV and I'm gonna rent it out on a, on a permanent basis to, to people. And the difference between, I say that and renting out a room is that when you rent out a room, you're, you're living in that house too. So you're gonna be very careful about who's coming into your house. Whereas in a camper, and I think it was mentioned, you have random people. You don't know really who they are because they're outside, but they are affecting that neighborhood. And, and again, they're, they're affecting the integrity of that neighborhood and the safety cause you don't really know who these people are. And so I don't know if your idea of having a permit, would that be something that you can only renew it for a certain amount of time? Or then, because then it's not temporary anymore? Because do we really wanna go to having permanent RVs on the side of houses and people just renting them out all the time? So what would prevent that?
Our initial thought was to have timeframes.
Okay.
For both, like for example, on vacant properties as well as developed properties. But now with this conversation, we'll take into consideration, you know, a little bit longer term as far as perhaps renting out their RV to somebody that doesn't have anywhere else to go. You know, as opposed to grandma and grandpa just coming to visit for two weeks or a month, let's say, in the driveway.
Right.
How do you make that determination?
Well, it would be the time, right? As if it's a month.
Well, they're gonna have to tell us. I mean, this is something we initially just, we were looking at visitors for a short period of time. Let's say a month, twice a year, for example. We're gonna ask that they get a no fee permit. We want it to be no fee because we don't wanna make the process so cumbersome. Nobody wants to go through it. So we're trying to gain as much compliance as we have can that way. But we're gonna have different criteria. For example, on a developed property with a principal structure versus on a vacant property.
One of the.
Oh wait, can I add something to that?
Sure.
Cause yeah, my concern is we're thinking about, okay, I own the house and I'm gonna rent out this RV. But we have rental properties that they're not, they don't, they're not owner occupied. So what's to prevent, you know, an investment company to say, I'm renting this house and we're gonna have an RV there so I can really have more revenue coming in? And then you, you have this real transient population.
I mean, I would just say we would have the same issue. One of, one of the housing types we're considering are ADUs. I kinda look at these as ADUs that aren't permanent. So, I don't know, if we allow one, we, I kind of lump them in sort of the same bucket. We could put with the, you know, campers in the driveway, we could have a regulation that it be owner occupied and not a rental property. I mean, we can sort of put those restrictions.
I like the idea of it being temporary, like having some kind of a time limit. And again, all, all of our code enforcement, as you know, is based on somebody. You don't go out there looking for problems, cause you have enough. Somebody's saying, this is a problem. You know, there, there's all these shady characters coming and going. And then that's when you would say, okay, what's going on here? And, and, but we have to have something to point to, to say, yes, that's not allowed. And you can address that concern. But if we don't even have that, there's nothing you can do about it, right? That's really what I think.
I would say like grandma and grandpa or a relative coming down.
No one's gonna complain about them.
Yeah, and usually they're not a problem.
Cause you gotta know those people who live there, first of all. You gotta know their, their parents come, okay, they come for a month, they stay. You're not gonna call, you're gonna drop a dime on them, that's what they used to say. But, do they even know what that means? The young people, they don't know what that means.
They don't know how to use it.
Dimes, dimes different now.
Yes, but you know, when, when there is a, a problem, when you do see people coming and going and like, gee, you know, I don't know who these people are. Then it'd be, this would be a, a way to address that. So you can cut it, cut it off before it becomes a, a bigger problem.
I appreciate the conversation. I see these as movable, portables, ADUs. But one of the complaints that I had was somebody had their RV right at the property line. And their house is right here. And the noise, the people were watching the TV in the camper. Windows open and stuff and it's just boring and disturbing the sleep of the person. So the location of that RV is gonna be vitally important. I mean, same with ADU. If you build a guest house or a tiny home or whatever in the backyard, it's gotta be permitted, you gotta have, you know, things going to it. And the placement of it is gonna make a difference also.
Talking about setbacks maybe.
Exactly, you'd have to have a setback for that. Otherwise you're having disturbance to the peace all the time.
Certainly not gonna have it on a quarter acre lot.
Well, yeah, that picture that you showed, that, that camper, they're parked on somebody else's property cause they don't have room to park it on the side of their house. There isn't really enough room.
Oh, there is room if they put it in their driveway.
But it would be like, they wouldn't even be able to walk there, you know? So, but if somebody were, if they did that and somebody were living in there, yeah, it'd be a, a problem for the, the next door neighbors if there was a house there. Cause now they, they have that right up against their, their property, right?
You can't do that.
Not easy problems to solve.
No, they're not.
And I think a lot of this too is temporary. Like that one picture you showed, that truck that had the trailer and looked like they were stuck. I mean, I don't know if they carrying everything they own there, but it looked like there was construction stuff. And there's a lot of people that are here because it's the construction trade. It's very nom, you know, it's a, it's a nomad type of an industry. Where, where the building is, that's where they descend. And when the building stops, they go. They, they leave. When we saw that in 2007, 2008, when everybody just literally left. In fact, we still see houses that were never finished. They just left. So I don't want us to be creating a permanent solution for, in some instances that are temporary problems.
Right, that, that wouldn't apply though because it's an undeveloped lot. So if you do initiate some sort of permitting by the property owner, as it stands now, you can't erect that on a temporary, maybe for the weekend, like you said. People come to check their property, they wanna go for the weekend. That's different than, but those are pretty much 24/7 for months at a time.
Right.
And they're undeveloped lots.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit of a different animal.
But I was thinking in terms of the RVs, like maybe some people are staying in RVs because they're, they're working here now while the construction is booming. And then as soon as the boom's over, the, the RV's gonna be gone, they're gonna be gone. So just to think about that too.
Commissioner McDowell.
So if we're gonna go to a permit type of a, a process, the people that own the property out in Yorkshire and they have someone that's squatting on their property, the people that are squatting have to go get a permit, but that permit has to be approved by the property owner?
No, so as it stands now, you can't do what they're doing out there.
Because of the code.
Right, and when we go out there and speak to them, we send a letter to the property owner. They actually have to have that person, if they won't leave, evicted through the sheriff's department and with the Northport police. And that takes like three months.
Thank you for that clarification.
So there's no permanent living out in where we took, out east.
If word is already out that, hey, Northport has all this vacant land out here. Hey, you can squat, you can do whatever. And it's gonna take a process to be removed and then you just move to the next lot. How do you avoid all of that?
Just try to stay on top of it right now, like I said, but it's, it's hard, you know? Most times though, when they get the letter, the, the people that own that lot, if they live in Texas, cause they know they're gonna get stuck, it's always gonna cost them something to get them out. The eviction process is a few hundred dollars alone. They have to do all that. And then if they leave debris, we make them clean that up. So I mean, it could, it could be pretty costly for them. They've never even seen the lot.
So that, it just basically continues because those squatters just know the law. And then they move to the next lot over and it starts everything over. And then they move to another one, starts everything over. How do you, how do you address the core root problem? I mean, is there a way to?
I mean, that's kinda why we're here today, I guess. And like we get some insight from everybody. But I thi, I do think it is two separate issues in the sense that grandma and grandpa are really not a problem usually. Maybe they stay. Maybe they stay a week too long, but you know, they're gonna go and they're not causing problems. But what I showed you out there is a major problem.
Yeah, and it's.
It's getting worse. And that in the long run could, and there's a lot of land out there, that could turn into a lot of, there's a lot of lots, a lot of people. They're very networking. They they all seem to have cell phones. I mean, that tomorrow, there could be four or five thousand people out there.
Is there a way that you can cite them for the entire city instead of just that lot? I mean, if you catch them violating, they're evicted from that, they have to leave the city instead of that lot? Can you do that?
Escort them out?
Yes.
Oh, I don't, I wa- I don't know the answer to that, cause it's done by the sheriffs and uh, maybe the police back here could.
Well, it's something that state legislators might have to look at also.
I'm not so sure that's gonna be why.
And that's not gonna happen, I know.
You go and dump them in Charlotte County, they're gonna turn around, come from Charlotte County and dump them back up here. I mean, it's gonna be a revolving door.
But that's exactly what I was, I was saying, was what Commissioner Luke had picked up on is you're not solving the problem because they're going from one lot over thirty feet, over a hundred feet to the other lot.
But then, under the new code, they're gonna be, the property owner is gonna be required to get a permit to allow that person to live there. If we keep finding that person living on the property, we're gonna, we're gonna have to just keep getting whoop that property through the code enforcement process. You know what I mean? And then the property owner will be responsible.
But.
For cleaning up the property.
But he's saying that out in Yorkshire, the ones that are squatting on somebody else's property.
Right.
The property owner is notified, but they're not allowed to be there anyway, so.
What happens is, then they move to another property.
Exactly.
But what I'm saying is, unless, and we'll consult with uh, the legal department to see if there's anything we can do beyond that, each time, we're gonna have to keep going through the code enforcement process with the squatter and the property owner at hand. I don't know that there's a solution. We will, we will check though with legal to find out if we can just ban them from the city. I don't know. We'll check.
It will continue to be a problem.
You just gave our city attorney some serious hard work.
I did it too, to start with.
We'll continue to have this problem until that area develops.
Correct.
And that's just the reality of the situation.
Are the ATVs being allowed out in that area is also adding to that problem?
I'm sure it does for weekends and stuff like that. People camping out there over the weekend with their ATVs. I've done it in the past.
Yep.
Right. Well, I think, I agree with Commissioner McDowell that when people know you can go out there and go.
For free.
Eeing for free. Now word gets out there that, oh, there's lot, there's land out there.
Ooh, I can bring my my RV out here and I can stay out here.
Not that, but knowing that there is land available because they're go, they're out there partying on the weekend. So therefore, that's how that, that whole underlying message gets out there.
One thing that I heard too is that they're incorporating food trucks out there too on the weekends.
They are.
They are.
It's a, it's a mess out there. When do you think you'll be bringing forward the ATV suggested or- ordinance?
I don't know.
Well, they're already illegal. They're already illegal, aren't they?
We have, we have an ordinance on the books right now, um, so we would be going back and taking a look at that to revise it. But if they have the owner's permission, I believe.
That's it, they could stay. Cause I know people who own property.
They can ride the ATV on there. But as far as the camping component of it, they need to comply with the current camping regulations. That's separate.
A whole lot of boners out there. They would have to have written permission to be on their property or it's none.
True.
Yeah.
So that, what you're saying is, cause I know people who own property out there and that's what they do on the weekends, is they go. And they, and so this permits them to to camp on their own property. Is that permitted?
Um, I'd have to look.
Even there's no house, you know.
There's no relation to the.
They're going, they're going out there with their RV. It's their property. They got their ATVs.
They're not just riding on their property.
See, the, there again, the owners of the property, if they're out there on the weekend, they're really not an issue because they end up leaving. They don't leave things there. It's an undeveloped lot. They, they, they have pride in their lot. They're gonna clean it up. Their holding tanks or whatever will work for a couple of days, so they're good. But what you saw up here is not, is permanent. No rules, no re, you know, it's free will, free, free living, or whatever you wanna call it, off the grid. So it's two issues.
Right, I just wanna clarify though, that that there's nothing preventing somebody from doing that, if they have property. They, they can go on their own property and that, and that still means, that's the, still the same, right?
Not necessarily, cause we just did have one out there because it's still an undeveloped. If you stay there, it's an issue. If you go out there for the weekend and you leave, you're good. But if you leave it there or
Right.
It's a permanent thing, it's an issue because it's an undeveloped lot.
Right, okay.
So that things have to be permitted.
That's already been addressed. That's already.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? You got everything you need going forward and you're gonna bring this back when?
The first and second, me, two meetings in September. Yes, yes sir. Yes sir.
Final call. Anything?
It, it's rough. I don't envy you guys at all. This is such a.
Terrible.
It is.
Before we close, uh, did you guys see the email? And I know this is being broadcast publicly, but our city attorney has done it again. Second year in a row has been made, uh, given the honor of being published in the Trend. Trend Magazine is an elite attorney.
Alright.
I did not see that.
There are only fifty of them, I believe, that received that recognition. And the recognition is really special because her peers chose her.
Wow, second year in a row.
Yeah, and the government aspect doesn't win as often as the private either. So yay her.
Yeah. It's an honor.
We expect nothing but the best.
That's right.
City clerk, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Alright, it is twelve fourteen. We are adjourned.